Is it working? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Anybody? No, not going? You don't have it on your screens.
I move to approve the minutes.
Moved by Andre, seconded by Mr. Strike. Is there any discussion on the minutes of April 9th, 2018? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. We're kind of stalling for a commissioner that's coming anyway and trying to get this worked out before we get into a long meeting, so bear with us just a second. All right, let the minutes reflect that Seth Anderson has joined us. We're on special order of business disclosures. Jared, any disclosures?
No disclosures.
John?
None.
Brian?
None.
Greg?
No disclosures.
Danielle?
I did not participate in case 2017-0124, so I will not be able to vote for that portion on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Andre?
Yeah, with regards to case 2017-0133, I was absent from the original meeting. I have listened to the audio and plan to participate.
Thank you. Seth?
I did not participate in case 2017-0124 and will not be voting on the resolution.
Great, thank you. Still have enough votes for that one. Okay. And I don't have any disclosures. On the consent agenda, can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Mr. Strike.
Second.
Oh, and now we're back up here, that's helpful. Seconded by Ms. Bailey. Any items on the consent agenda that any commissioners would like to pull? We've three resolutions in front of us. Hearing none, any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Next up, landscape plan under section three, case 201845, contact-sensitive solutions transportation project, concept report, site plan review for Third Avenue channelization. Ms. Ferguson, can we have the staff report? Oh, and I, before you go, oh, we just, we just approved it, it was part of the consent agenda.
That's fine. Well, yeah.
Did anyone have issues on that, by the way? Sorry, I missed it.
I guess just before we start the guts of the meeting, I'd just like to acknowledge that one of our great staff people is going to be retiring soon, Sharon Ferguson. And oftentimes, we let them go away without thanking them, and I hate to do that. And this may be your last meeting, so I'd just like to say thank you for your service to the municipality of Anchorage. I know that you, it's more than just a job to you, it was more of a commitment to making the city a better place, and I think we all thank you for that, and you'll be missed.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Sharon. You know what, I'm not going to let you off the hook that easily, because even though we approved the consent agenda, we don't really approve these concept reports anyway. So I'm going to go back and ask the commission if anyone has any comments on that report. Anybody have any issues with the Third Avenue channelization concept report or wish to speak to it or provide any guidance as that proposed road project moves forward? Mr. Spring?
Yeah, of course I do. Let's see, we don't have a presentation, I assume, so, or is there people, you're here for that? Okay. I got a couple of questions. I know, remind me, the concept report is designed to identify stakeholders, right, and to make sure that you identify the issues and whatever. And I may have missed it, but I didn't see any connection with the, or mention of the trucking industry in this report, except for there was an issue in the past, I think, with attorney movements on Ingraham that you mentioned in the report. So I just want to make sure that, on the record, that the trucking industry is consulted as part of the process, and I'm sure you're going to do that, it's just that I didn't see them specifically mentioned in the narrative. And also, I don't know if you have scheduled a meeting with the AMATS pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee. Have you met with them yet? There, I think there's, a lot of this seems to be related to pedestrian and bicycle issues. That seems to be what's driving this project primarily. The pedestrian vehicular accidents surrounding the Brother Francis Shelter, you mentioned there was like five in the last year, which is a substantial number. I think they might have something to say that might benefit the process.
Hello, Mr. Spring. My name is Tanya Hickok with the Boote Company. I'm the project administrator on behalf of the MOAPMNE, H-I-C-K-O-K. And to answer your question, I was just contacted by the project manager for Vision Zero at Kudusen, and we were talking about this very thing, about the pedestrian access, or the pedestrian crashes, and how we can work together with the two projects on how we can improve safety in the area.
That sounds good. Is there any plan also to, I know you consulted with the Brother Francis Shelter staff and probably the administrator, do you have any plans to really talk and to the clients of the homeless shelter? You might gain some insight as to where they're going, or something, or, you know, their route that they prefer to take, I'm not sure where.
That's an idea we can take into consideration, for sure.
Yeah, they, it's possible to talk to them, I think, and get some good, you know, feedback from them. They definitely know what the dangers are in that area, I'm sure. It might be a beneficial thing to do.
Mr. Spring, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, maybe a question for staff or the chair, just for my benefit, what's the Planning and Zoning Commission's role in reviewing or providing input to a context report or a concept report?
Sharon, you want to go first?
Yes, Mr. Anderson through the chair. It's pretty much as Chair Robinson mentioned before, it's an opportunity, an early opportunity for the commission to take a look at the project and answer any questions that they may have, and it's an, it's an opportunity to get an overview of what the project is. It will return as the real case before the commission when it gets to the draft study report stage, but at this point, it's just an early look at the project, and it's an opportunity for you all to voice any questions you may have.
Thank you.
I sort of consider it almost like, you know, it's a scoping document, so if people have thoughts about it in relation to either adopted plans, or in this case, you know, it's a, it's a main road approaching our downtown, what does that, what does that mean? Should it have any, you know, sort of thing because of that? But it's a, it's a bit of a scoping document, or issues that those of us sitting here might be aware of, that they hadn't considered as part of their initial outreach. Mr. Looney?
Yeah, I realize that's just a conceptual cross-section in the document, but I was in the same vein that was just mentioned by Commissioner Spring, I'd have to think that the, a shoulder on the right-hand lane, between the travel lane and the curb, would be appropriate for bicycle use. I think, I'm pretty sure if you look at the current bike plan, it does identify improvements in this area from post to E Street. I know this isn't the hallway, but this, this does, is in that same area. I guess I'm looking forward to when we see it next time that it would have a shoulder.
Thank you, Mr. Looney. That would also provide some separation for the pedestrians. Mr. Strike, go ahead.
Thank you. When this does come before us, I guess officially, will that be a public hearing? Question to the staff.
Typically, road projects are not a public hearing. We typically only place them on the regular agenda for a public hearing if there's some controversy surrounding them, meaning members of the public, you know, would give them an opportunity to come up to the microphone and voice their concerns. But typically, road projects are not a public hearing.
I do know that as, in my five years here on the commission and so, that every time we have this topic, a topic come up in this particular area, it does command, command a number of public testimony. We've talked about zoning issues, conditional use, safety, police calls, et cetera, et cetera, in this, in this area. And it seems like every time we, there's an issue that's developed or identified, well, we change the code. We, you know, it's not zoned correctly, well, let's get it zoned PLI. Let's, doesn't have the right use, let's get a conditional use applied to it. It's not safe, let's develop a new road system out there. But every time there's a pushback for an issue here, we tend to go address the symptom, yet the public continues to address the hard issues that are taking place out there in the right location, where's the right locations for this facility, et cetera. My point is, let's be very clear why we're having this conversation. And it's not, you know, we can show all the other areas around neighborhoods and the businesses around, but we're having this conversation because of the Brother Francis and the Beans Cafe. And for that, I believe it should be a public testimony. Thank you.
And just to be clear, I mean, two points on that, maybe, maybe it, I mean, it does, it does go into quite a bit about Beans Cafe and Brother Francis in the document, it's not like they're not disclosing it or talking about it. Well, okay, so just, just to be clear, road projects are not without public process, it's just how we handle them. So I want to be clear, if we start dealing with one this way, why that is, what's, what's your threshold? Why is it that a road project here gets a public hearing? There's something on our agenda later tonight about the Seward Highway, does that become a public hearing as well? I just, just think about it holistically.
No, no, it's a good point. The historical context, in my opinion, I believe deserves this to be elevated into that public hearing. We've had probably no less than half a dozen situations or things before this commission for this particular site, of which, safety in this road has been a topic.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what, how I would pose it right now to Ms. Hickok is, you know, you're going to want a robust conversation with the immediate stakeholders, including the neighborhood stakeholders, at a, at a, at a minimum there.
I concur. I agree.
Could I just ask one, thank you for that, Mr. Strike, one last thing, on your diagram of the road, you show the road corridor, and then you bump, you bump out this, the area, kind of add a little square in there, what is, is that page is that on? My little, nine? No, which one is it? Eighteen, I think, sounds right. No, I, some, I just, sorry, I just missed it. I had like a big yellow stretch, and then where you're describing the area of the project.
The project is a page, okay. Pages are.
That's what it is, I'm getting caught, it's, second page nine, right? Okay. Can you describe why, why that's held out there?
That's actually the project area for MLMP's project that's going through there concurrently with ours. When they're undergrounding some of their overhead lines.
Okay, great, thanks. Thank you for your time here this evening. Okay, next up, unfinished business, case 2017-133, municipality of Anchorage, review and recommendation by Planning and Zoning Commission on an assembly of an ordinance amendment to repeal and reenact Anchorage Municipal Code to update provisions regarding stream, water body, and wetland protection, amend chapters 2102 and 2103 to transfer variance authority for variances from streams, water body, and wetland protection to the zoning board of examiners and appeals, and add a new section regarding non-conformities with said protections and setback, and amend AMC section 2114040. The public hearing is closed on this matter. I will say that an individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Our action here tonight is a recommendation to the assembly. So with that, I will start by going to staff for staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On February 5th, 2018, the commission held a public hearing on the case 2017-133. After taking public testimony, as you said, the commission closed the public hearing and made a motion to postpone the decision on the case until supplemental information could be answered and brought back to the commissioners. So the commissioners requested that Watershed Management Services and planning provide more information related to some of the questions brought up in public testimony. The planning staff has supplied attached information that was provided by Planning and Watershed Management Services to those seven questions. Watershed Management Services is here tonight, and we can answer any questions or further explain anything that you may have. I'll pass it off here to Jeff Urbannis from Watershed.
You're, you're just wait, waiting for us, Jeff, just to be clear? Or go ahead, you get, you want to go?
No, I'm sorry, whatever, I was waiting for you guys.
Okay. Mr. Spring, go ahead.
Yeah, this pertains to the staff report dated February 5th, 2018. Looking for some guidance here, are the recommended changes and corrections still the same that are listed on page two and three and four? Or have they changed any, or has there been any additions?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, there are no further recommended changes.
So if we recommend approval, then we should consider all those changes as part of our motion, then?
Yes.
I'm assuming, okay.
Ms. Bailey?
I had a question regarding question one on the information that was brought in. Specifically, I had asked at our previous meeting, I think it was February 5th, about reconciling this plan with the hillside plan, and I asked specifically if the hillside plan could potentially override this plan, and I don't really feel like that issue was addressed in any of these additional comments, and so I'm not sure if this should be addressed to Watershed or to staff, but that's something that I would like more information on.
Through the chair, Ms. Bailey, I think the hillside district plan speaks to a 50-foot stream protection setback. The ordinance, and Mr. Urbannis can correct me if I'm wrong, the ordinance for the hillside would require a hard 25-foot setback and a soft 25 for a total of 50 feet. So I don't think that would require an amendment to the hillside district plan, I don't think it affects the hillside district plan. I think that the ordinance, to a certain extent, would implement the hillside district plan. I'm not sure to the extent that it was intended, but it's, the hillside district plan simply speaks to a 50-foot setback, it doesn't speak to a hard 50-foot soft, you know, or a hard 25 and a soft 25. So I don't, I don't think it really affects it in that way.
Just as a follow-up, then, there was some comments by a couple of community councils and by an individual that came and spoke, that they preferred to keep the hillside district plan in place. Do you think that their analysis on whether or not the hillside was more, provided a better opportunity for stream setbacks is just incorrect, and they're misinterpreting it? Because I'm trying to reconcile the difference, and if I have community members saying that this provides a more liberal stream setback, and I have staff saying, no, it doesn't, I want to kind of figure out where that discrepancy is coming from, and also, since a lot of the public is here, maybe that can be explained to them.
Yeah, through the chair, Ms. Bailey, the hillside district plan simply says 50 feet. The current Title 21 says 50 feet, there is no hard 50, or a hard 25 and soft 25. So the ordinance amending Title 21 to allow for a hard and soft 25 feet for a total of 50 on the hillside would not necessarily affect or impact the hillside district plan. It would, in the minds of those folks who are interested in it, probably, it was, it's going to change the implementation process that we have in place today, because today it's a, it's a hard 50-foot setback. So the effect of this ordinance would be to change the way that the code is interpreted, but the language of the hillside district plan doesn't, doesn't require a hard 50-foot setback, it simply says a 50-foot setback. So the way that the ordinance would, is written or proposed, it wouldn't require a change to that.
I think that helps clarify some stuff. I may have follow-up questions later.
Yeah, I want to unpack that a little bit more, if you don't mind. So the, the, what, what happens today if someone comes in to develop a hillside lot?
Mr. Robinson, we would apply a hard 50-foot setback as required by Title 21.
Because it, because Title 21 says, says 50 feet, it's been, the code was modified as a result of the hillside.
This idea of a hard, hard 25 and a soft 25 was never, was never thought of, and doesn't exist in current Title 21. Jeff might be able to provide some, some clarity as to how that, how we arrived at that, but I'll turn it over to you, Jeff.
So when, if you look back towards the existing code and the three goals that are set out there, there's the directive to create a larger setback, but to also try and figure out ways to provide some relief to affected property owners. So did, one of the ways that we looked to do that was through a larger setback that allowed some, not impervious, like kind of temporary uses, structures, and those sorts of things still had to be outside, so Dave's correct that the, the concept of like a two, like a two-zone, two-tier setback didn't exist prior to this, so, you know, that, that's new. I can say when we were drafting up this and looking at ordinances from other jurisdiction and some of the national recommendations out there, when we considered the issue of the hillside district area and how that was impacted by this, we, we considered that the 50 foot, you know, 50 foot, 50 foot equals 50, equals 50 feet. I understand and I recognize that that's not been the same interpretation to some individuals who live in the hillside area and the community councils to, you know, different degrees. But when we drafted it, we thought, you know, it's 50 feet, it's still a 50-foot setback, it's, it's a different implementation than what was existing, and so I guess there's, you know, we aired in, or we just chose to go the direction where the whole entire city was treated, was treated the same, particularly since we've moved away from one-size-fits-all like setback and went to something that was based more on stream side, stream size, excuse me.
But just, just to be clear, hillside district plan passes, it has a policy recommendation in it to increase the stream setback to 50 feet per side, right? Normally, those changes don't take effect until the code is changed to amend it, to say that, right? Right, so then, did, we then, we then amended the code to actually say that? Is that right?
That is correct.
Just on the hillside?
Correct.
Right? And so now, we're going back with, through this ordinance, which is a larger ordinance, and basically saying, it's still 50 feet, but it's 25 and 25, and what you can do within that outer 25 is different than what you could do previous.
That's correct.
And over the course of that time, since that, that was changed, were you having issues with property owners coming forward?
You know, in my time with Watershed Management, I, you know, 15, 16 years, we've had one variance request that we didn't support, kind of work through, and we've had, you know, it's not, I mean, it's an increase of a couple, but we, we had two, two, two variances go through between 2012 and now that were what I would consider variances that were like elective, there was no really compelling reason, and they, I guess they just, it seems to be that there's been an, there's an increase in the amount of variances, and it, and it definitely seemed like the approving body was more relaxed about that than it had been previously.
Were there any subdivisions that came in that, you know, were differently designed because there was now a, you know, 100-foot setback versus a 50-foot setback during, during that time?
Just to, maybe just a clarification, it would still be, so like a subdivision that went in after 2012 would be 50-foot setback, you know, 100-foot total. This would be the same thing, it's, it's just in that outer 25 feet on each side, there would be some allowances for, like I said, things like lawns, greenhouses, you know, fire rings, those sorts of things.
I get, no, I, I hear you. I think it's just, when I think about the hillside, there's two, two scenarios, one is an existing lot owner that's got a creek, the other is large tracks that are, still need to be subdivided, right? And it seems like where we really get jammed up are when you, when you got a creek on a, on a, for the hillside, even an acre lot is a small lot, right? Especially if you got a creek running through the middle of it potentially. But on the, like, were there, how many subdivisions have we had that had significant creek issues? I mean, was this a hardship for these larger subdivided tracks?
No, I'd actually say it was the opposite. It was individual property owners who had bought a lot with, like, under a 25-foot setback with some development plans for like an RV pad, or an addition to their home, or some kind of thing like that, and then came in for a development permit and were told that the setback was now 50 feet versus 25. And, and that has, and that, that is that category of small unnamed streams that we, when what we've proposed, that's where we had the greatest amount of difficulty. You know, the, the things that are, you know, to like the casual observer, someone would call a stream, for the most part, those are all 50 feet, and what we've proposed, it's the roadside ditches, it's the channelized features that may connect like a natural wetlands to, you know, like a stream, those are the ones that we've had the real difficulty with, and I, and I think, I don't know that the subdivisions would be impacted in the same way, because 50 feet's still 50 feet. I mean, when you're, I don't know, you, you guys would all know better than me, I mean, it's, it's the placement of the structures that's more problematic in developing a subdivision than it is like some of the ancillary stuff that's allowed in that outer 25 feet.
So, Mr. Robinson, if I could make a quick point, so the hillside district plan has, since I think it was adopted in 2010, has all, has said 50 feet. The code, Title 21, didn't change until the new Title 21.
Okay.
So up until that point, you had a discrepancy between the hillside district plan and code. So there were, there were some subdivisions that came in with a 25-foot setback. So I have to believe that since the 50-foot was instituted in the new Title 21, that it has impacted the way that, that developers subdivide property. And, and to Jeff's point, we have seen numerous, you know, people come in to, to deal with the stream protection setback issues that exist on their property. Most of them have elected not to seek a variance, but I can tell you that we've had dozens that have come in and inquired about it because of these issues. But when they, when they found out how onerous the process was to go through, they elected just to drop the project. So, you know, we may have only had, you know, three or four applications that have come in in the last several years, but there have been dozens who have inquired about it.
Yeah, and I got a couple of people in the Q, I'll finish here. I guess my point there is, you know, I think what I heard from the community, that, that resolves the second issue, which was the purpose of why we're exploring this ordinance, which is hardship of individual property owners. It doesn't necessarily resolve the first one in new subdivisions. And I can appreciate that you're creating an administrative nightmare if you say like large tracks have to develop at such and such a way because we haven't made those decisions already, but smaller ones need a little more flexibility. But I, you know, that's, you know, just because we were late to change it, and therefore created, got these people jammed up in the middle, you know, it doesn't necessarily address some of the people's concerns that we heard about the. some of the people's concerns that we heard about the, the need for this larger setback. Let, let me, let me go to Mr. Gardner and then Mr. Looney and we'll see if we, are we sticking on the Hillside District Plan questions or something else? Okay. Go ahead, Jared.
You may have answered this partially already, but I just wanted to confirm my understanding of the relation between the Hillside District Plan and the proposed amendments and are there at least some cases? So, there are some instances, and I think you mentioned the unnamed tributaries and streams where it is just twenty-five feet under the new proposals, right? So, it, are there some instances where there's a discrepancy between that category and, and Hillside District Plan? Am I understanding that correctly?
Uh, to the Chair, Mr. Gardner, I, I don't believe in, on the hillside that there are any streams that would be slated for a, a straight twenty-five-foot setback. Mr. Urbans, can you, it's, it's, all of them are twenty, twenty-five and twenty-five hard and, hard and soft?
Well, the, the smallest streams, the small unnamed streams would be twenty-five each side. And the, it's all of the named streams that are, you know, fifty, twenty-five plus twenty-five on each side.
So, Mr. Gardner, to your question, I would say that there, there is the possibility that there could be a discrepancy between the Hillside District Plan and the way that this ordinance is written because it would allow for a twenty-five-foot setback on the hillside, a straight twenty-five-foot setback on the hillside, whereas the Hillside District Plan calls for a fifty-foot setback.
Okay. And did I, did I catch correctly then that the, the streams that are listed, and I'm, and I'm looking at page thirty-three in the report that was prepared in February or whenever it was, that the stream or the creeks that are listed there for the twenty-five-foot category without the twenty-five-foot riparian edge zone, that none, none of those listed ones are on the hillside?
Through the Chair, I'm not quite sure that I understand. If you go through the list of streams, and, and there's a map as of, that we, also an online map that we've made available, we don't have it pulled up here, but, so, i- if, in the Hillside District Planning area, like kind of north to south, there, there's Little Campbell Creek, Rabbit Creek, Craig Creek, Little Rabbit Creek, Little Survival Creek, Potter Creek. I mean, all of those creeks are on the list on that table. There are smaller tributary streams that would, that would be twenty-five feet. Not in all cases, but in, in many, if not most of the cases, those ones that are twenty-five feet are streams that are, have been heavily impacted by previous development and they're pipe ditch straightened. I don't know if anyone's familiar with the area of Golden View Middle School and Prominence Point there. I mean, there's just a whole network of streams that have been channelized and are running ninety degrees through property and all the rest of it. And as it stands today, like those would have a fifty-foot setback, a hard setback with no provisions for, you know, really anything. I mean, something as simple as like a request to put a, a shed twenty-five feet away would, would, I mean, there, that would require a variance. So, what I mentioned earlier, when, when we, when we thought about the issues of the Hillside District Plan and this ordinance, this is, what we're proposing is something that didn't exist previously, and I guess it was, what we considered was it honored the, the, you know, the kind of the spirit of the, of the Hillside District Plan and that it, that it had a fifty-foot setback for all of the major streams in the Hillside District Planning area. And, looking back to the goals of what the project that we're on in general, we provided relief in the cases of streams that, I, I mean, I think most, most casual observers wouldn't, wouldn't call these things streams.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not saying that's like a hundred percent, but, but for, for far and away the majority of them, they're just not what someone would typically, would typically think of as a stream.
Okay, thanks. And I had one kind of tangential question as well, which I, I don't recall if we talked about this last time around or not, but going through my notes from before, I saw there were, in some of the comments that came through in the packet, there were a couple of references to the concerns about the recreational fields and fairways being listed in the, as an accessible use in the riparian edge zone, I think, if I'm calling for.
So, I think that was, that, that actual language is taken right from a, either the EPA or their Center for Watershed Protection, their model code, and, and I think it was interpreted in a way that we hadn't intended. When, when, you know, like resiliency and green infrastructure kind of thought of in the, you know, like planning a community. What, what the recommendations kind of nationally is to like put your bank up on the hill and put your soccer field down next to the river. And, so, this, this was something that spoke to that and we weren't like looking to increase the number of like fields, but, but recognizing the same thing like, so like a park, I mean, if you think of most of the parks that are located near streams, there are open areas, whether it's like a formal ball field or a place where people picnic or throw a frisbee or, you know, that kind of thing. So, outside, out of that outer twenty-five, it, it still is an impervious area. It still is an area that would provide floodplain storage and floods and not cause, I mean, like, it's okay to have like a soccer field flooded for a week after it rains and so I think, I think that was maybe interpreted differently than how we had intended it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Looney.
Actually, a lot of the discussion we've had in the last couple of minutes kind of clarifies my question, but, but essentially, it's, it's about the small unnamed streams and, and I have reviewed the map that you have online that shows the, the, I guess, the setback of the different streams and generally like, like we list the streams on page thirty-three, the, the more, the named streams in the hillside are typically all fifty-feet setback, you know, like Little Survival Creek. But, like, like you mentioned the example of the creek that goes right to the east of Golden View, that's like an unnamed creek that you could step across and that's when it will, it will, with this ordinance, it would be a twenty-five-foot setback on either side. And, and that's my understanding is that the objection that we heard with the public testimony from the Water Race Council and the Community Council was the fact that until now, it has been a fifty-foot setback and this proposed ordinance would reduce the setback. And I think that's what the objection was. And, but there's quite a few streams in the hillside area that, that are going to, would change like that, go from fifty to twenty-five. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, but I think that's, my understanding of that was the objection that we heard during the public testimony. But, the, there's quite a few backbone streams, but there's twice as many of these unnamed streams up there in the hillside area. Am I reading that right?
Yeah, I mean, I wish we had the ability to pull, pull up that map. I, I think there were some references to it in what we submitted, but I, yes, that is the case. I guess I would kind of come back to what I said earlier. We feel that what we've proposed honors the fifty-foot setback that's proposed and at the same time, it also does speak to some of the issues that we've seen since that change was implemented in 2012 and what were on the face of it fairly reasonable requests of folks who had owned property who were, like I said, wanted to, you know, they want, they just, they had always built, planned to build a shop and now no longer had the space for it and, so, so like I said, I guess, we, I mean, we're serving multiple masters here in terms of like getting everything to work out and, and I think what we proposed, we thought was a, was something that kind of touched all of them at the same time.
Ms. Bailey.
Would it be possible administratively for us to amend this ordinance to have Hillside District add a minimum hard fifty-foot setback? If that's a route we want to go down, is that possible?
To the Chair, Ms. Bailey, yes, that is possible.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? That was question number one on the issue response. Mr. Spinelli.
So, how are no-name streams addressed, the, the smaller no-name ones that are on the list?
So, if you go through, through the Chair, Mr. Spinelli, starting on page eleven of twenty-three in the actual ordinance, I'm not sure what may, in your, I can try and find the page in your, in your packet.
That's page thirty-two and thirty-three.
When you, when you get onto the second page of that table, second from, second, second to last row from the bottom at the end there, all are their streams named or otherwise an unnamed tributaries to all streams. So, that, that's where, that's where, across the municipality, unnamed streams would have a twenty-five-foot had hard setback but no increase. You know, we've heard, we've heard some, I mean, certainly I've heard some criticism about using that as a criteria. It, it's not perfect, but I mean, there's a reason why Campbell Creek has a name and some of these other things don't. I mean, people tend to name things that are more prominent features in the landscape. It, like I said, it's not a, it's not a hundred percent, but, but, I mean, there's a, there's a reason why the larger streams are named and the other ones aren't.
I, I got one while I'm waiting for others. Mr. Urbans, if you go to page thirty-five, I guess it's page fourteen of twenty-three on the ordinance, Roman numeral, numeral six, so, I think it's, it's an, it's an exception here and it says unpaved trails no wider than three feet except where part of an urban, except where part of an urban stream restoration project. And what I, I was thinking of is the testimony related to Fish Creek and I, I know there's a lot of talk about it. I know it's a big project potentially, but I think is, those are, that's potentially an exception, but it, does it mean you could, what is it, what is the exception for? Is it for the three feet or is it the paving? Or is it both?
Uh, Tyler, I'm, Mr. Robinson, I'd argue that it's actually both.
Is that in the intent?
That is the intent.
So, if it, if it said instead trails no wider than three feet and unpaved except where part of an urban stream restoration, if we reordered it like that, would it be a little clearer?
I, I think, I think, yeah, if, I think that would be.
Okay.
And what, I'm, if I may, just because there's been some questions about what this, what the intent of this was. If you look at how stream restoration, bank restoration money's been spent in the last fifteen, twenty years here, primary driver maybe other than culvert replacements, like fish passage issues, is kind of correcting erosion problems because of trail encroachment. I, I think that the Chester Creek and the Campbell Creek is, I mean, they're great, they're great entities in our community, but they're not without problems. So, what we did in this is those large paved trails, which are essentially like mini roads with a structural section, is to move them further away from the creek than what's allowed now. But, immediately, we're left with the problem of what, what do you do? I mean, are people allowed to go to the creek? So, that's where we put in this provision for smaller unpaved trails. It could be something as, as simple as a social trail, but it might also be, you know, a walkway, a boardwalk, a geo grid, something like that would allow people to get to a fish platform or, you know, like have their creek, their dog go down to the creek to get a drink, those sorts of things. And, so it wasn't our intention that these would just be like muddy cattle trails that were eroding into, into the stream. When, when the question came up about like Fish Creek, like, well, what are we going to do there? Your ordinance wouldn't allow this to happen, that's where we added the second half, which was to just ma- make it clear that that was a project that staff supported and that particularly in a situation like that where there's not a lot of space, you may end up with less than a perfect situation. And, and I mentioned this in, in the staff report, like, you know, an exception might be something like the, the boardwalk trail at the Sourdough Mining Company. So, it's, it's still do, it's still good for the creek, but it's allowing the project that wouldn't happen otherwise.
I saw that. I mean, I, what I, what I was also thinking though is I could envision a Fish Creek restoration project that is pretty constrained from a right-of-way standpoint and is actually channelized even in a portion of it if it couldn't, you know, be total, you know, we couldn't buy enough right-of-way or whatever, whatever. And I just wanted to make sure we weren't saying that. In that case, if that project moves forward, it doesn't mean that the trail has to go from paved to unpaved for a period just because it's within twenty-five feet. I mean, you'll do the right thing, but, but maybe it's just, you're better off, again, channel, making it a, a concrete urban section through there, right?
I, I mean, I think you, you could do the best with what you have to work with.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Any other questions on the issues in front of us? And I guess with that, I would say, you know, as you think about it, are we ready to act on it? Are there still outstanding questions or is there help that you need to get there? I had a question with Mr. Urbans earlier and I think it's, you know, obvious to sort of say, here we are in, in, in May or, or in, in May, and I think that it's, it's, you know, we're already in the building season, right? This is not going to be passed to be, for this building season. So, there's, there's, I'd rather get it right than I'd like, than, than get it fast. And give the Assembly, you know, I want to show the Assembly that we've waded through at least the, you know, the, the responses and the comments that we got as well as the, you know, fifteen or so people that came and testified that evening. Mr. Spring.
Yeah, I guess I have concern that some of the, even some of the discussions we had tonight aren't really documented as a response to the concerns that we heard. And I think it's, it might be lost is what I'm concerned. I've heard good discussion about the Hillside District Plan, but I wasn't aware of the, the fine nuances of the fifty-foot setback and whether or not it really changed, changed the Hillside District Plan or not. That type of documentation I think would be useful for the Assembly. I don't see, you know, anything here in the report or that really helps that process. So, I'm kind of concerned that, even though I, I'm pretty happy with the ordinance and I think you did a good job of responding to the issues, I think there's some of the, the real meat of it is going to be lost here and we're going to forward this to the, to the Assembly and they're going to have to go right through everything that we went through and want to have the benefit of our, our help. I think they, what I've heard from Assembly Member Whittleton was that they appreciate our thoroughness in reviewing these issues. And I think part of that thoroughness involves a really well-documented issue response summary. And when we present that to them and we go through that and we say, yeah, we agree with staff, you don't, you aren't, you don't agree with this, this issue, you want to keep it the same, and we say, yeah, we agree with staff, then we have it documented that, all the issues. Otherwise, I think they're going to have to go through and do a lot of the work that we did without our, really our benefit, our, our guidance if we just approve it as it is.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. I got Mr. Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Spring, to respond to your, your comment, I, I think you have very good comments and our intent is to document all the issues and present those to the Assembly. I suspect, given the importance of this ordinance, that we're going to have a work session with the Assembly as a whole and I, and I would probably guess that we would have a, we would, we would meet with the Economic and Development Committee, John Whittleton's committee as well. So, I think there's going to be at least two opportunities to present a lot of these issues and document them. So, our intent is not to, not to document these issues that the, that the Commission is bringing up, but rather to, to bring them up to the Assembly and deal with them, so.
I'm not sure that you all are in the same, I mean, are you, you, Dave, you're suggesting move forward, there's plenty of process. What I heard John, I think, suggesting is a, is a more traditional issue response document that we have where it's really kind of detailed out one way or the other and we very clearly, and, and it could be that everything is here and it's just that it's, we're worried that it's a little bit lost in, in the narrative. Mr. Looney, go ahead.
I, I guess I would try to comment that we did have quite a few questions last time we met to talk about this and your, and the responses that I, I was part of this package we got here today, I, I think it's pretty thorough. I know that a lot of our, the discussion before was in the Gruedwood area, so you go into quite a bit of detail in those unique challenges in that. But, I feel, I'm, I guess, I'm confident with the responses I've seen from our last meeting.
Mr. Robinson, to respond to your, your comment, our intent is to do whatever the Commission asks us to do. I mean, we feel like we're, we're happy to document what we need to document, but if you're, if you're not satisfied that we've dealt with all the issues, please let us know what those are. We'll go back and, and, and deal with them. But, we feel confident that, that we've got a good, a good ordinance and that we're willing to address the issues at, at the Assembly.
Brian, are you back in or is that from before? No. Can I ask on, there was a Trigay Eagle River Advisory Board Resolution that had some recommendations. Did we, have we addressed those recommend, I think they're on page seventy, seventy-one of the packet?
Mr. Robinson, not being, it's been a while, not being familiar with everything that's in that list. in that list, my under, my understanding is all of the staff changes touched on those things. And I can think of a number of things that I know on the list of suggested changes that would, that, that came from that meeting with that, with that group. So for instance, particularly the question of like non-conforming issues, you know, substantial damage to homes and some of those things are definitely from our outreach with that, with that, with that group.
Okay. Mr. Spring.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure what the will of the commission is, but Commissioner Looney has a good point. If he's, I wanted to get a sense of what other people thought. Maybe as an alternative to us going over again, if you could sort out for the assembly the list of issues, and at least identify which issues you addressed in the ordinance change. Because it's a lot of work to go back and, you know, look at the comments, and then you have to go back to the ordinance and, or the changes that you proposed for recommended, and make sure that it was incorporated. So maybe that would be a helpful step for the assembly, rather than us going through it again. Just make sure that they understand which issues you actually made changes for in the ordinance, or recommended changes, and that might suffice to help them out. I know I had to do a lot of flipping back and forth and, you know, see, did you address it, did you not? Just a suggestion.
What's the wish of the body?
I beat, I beat Brian to it. He was about to push, I should have lent you, sorry. In the matter of proposed changes regarding stream water body and, about land protection to Title 21, I move to recommend approval of the ordinance with the recommended changes and corrections on page 2, 3, and 4 of the staff report dated February 5, 2018.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Looney. Would anyone like to speak to that motion? Mr. Strike?
Yes, thank you. As I'm going through, should we be voting for, on the four different components of the petition or request? As I'm reading the agenda here, and I'm trying to go back through on the, on the soft copy online, but there are four items that are being addressed. One is just not the new code, one is also the change of who has the authority to control and manage the code.
Yeah, I think the difference here is it's one ordinance, even though it's, it's four sections. So unless the clerk tells me otherwise, I don't think we need four separate motions. You could have four separate findings if you're okay with those different areas, but because it's, you know, versus a, a case that's a, you know, where we're the quasi-judicial board, and there's multiple things that we're approving, then that's a different, you know, different action. But because it's one ordinance, we're okay with that.
Well, it is one ordinance, but it uses specific language, language here, repeal and reenact, amend the charter, and it adds a new section and so forth.
I'm comfortable unless, unless staff or anybody else says otherwise, I'm comfortable with it being one ordinance, but, but of course.
Is there any one provision within the group that might prevent the group from otherwise?
That's a legitimate question, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Ms. Bailey.
I think overall, I'm very much in favor of both the goal and also the details of this plan. I know I was getting to some critical issues, but overall, there was a lot of balance went into this, and you guys went down to specific tracts of land, which whenever you're having this big of a shift, there's something like that is going to happen. However, I am going to move to amend one portion of that, and that is predominantly because the overarching goals that you set out were to provide wider stream protection setbacks and to provide relief for property that would be impacted or rendered non-conforming by those wider setbacks. And I find that that is not actually the case in the Hillside District Plan, and so I would move to amend this ordinance to keep the Hillside District Plan at a minimum hard 50-foot stream setback. But for the most part, every other aspect of the plan, I think it was very well looked at. I appreciated all the outreach that you did to the public. There's a lot of community council feedback that was there. Most of it was positive, except for regarding this hillside area, and I think that's where my amendment is trying to address that. And I, I just think a lot of outreach and a lot of hard work went into this, and I appreciate all the work that you did. But I would be moving to amend on that.
Let you speak to that, but let me make sure you get a second here. Can I get a second to Ms. Bailey's motion? Thank you, Mr. Strike. Thank you, Ms. Bailey. I got Mr. Looney first, and then staff.
Actually, I also want to say that I appreciate the, the plan, actually, the fact that it's a science-based.
Brian, just, are you, are you talking about this amendment to the motion, or you want to wait and talk to the main, back to the main motion?
Yeah, I guess I, I'll wait.
Okay. So, Mr. Odell, are you responding to Ms. Bailey's?
Through the chair, Ms. Bailey, just a point of clarification. So if you do make an amendment, we, staff would just, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but we'd ask that you talk about, is that going to be including streams named or otherwise and unpaved, unnamed tributaries of all streams?
Yes.
So just, just, okay, okay.
Mr. Looney.
Okay, I guess I will jump in, and I'll stay focused on the amendment. But the, as far as I know, there, the, the plan does increase the setbacks in some streams that are science-based reasons for that. I'm sure that Mr. Urbannis can tell us that. But so, my understanding is that the, the plan reduces the setbacks for small streams that are unnamed, you can step across, but it increases it for the large streams, like in the Gruedwood area or the Pierce Creek type thing. So in a way, it's, I understand Commissioner Bailey's concept, but I think that if the overall goal is to adjust the setbacks to fit the stream, I think it's been done. It's, it's actually gone down in some places and gone up in other places. So that's why I probably won't support the amendment.
Mr. Urbannis.
It's, it's kind of a mixed bag, actually, because the way that the plan was implemented, it was based on the boundary of the Hillside District Planning Area. So there are actually, if you look at a map, there are actually cases where like Little Campbell Creek, or like Little Rabbit Creek, for example, I think Little Rabbit too, where like if it was outside of the Hillside District Planning Boundary, it was 25. Once it crossed into the Hillside District Planning Boundary, it went to 50. And then once it got beyond the outer part and the upper edge, then it was back to 25, and then it went back to 50, and back to 25. And so, the, yeah, I mean, overall, there was a loss on some of them, but it's more consistent. But also to, you know, some of the stretches of Campbell Creek, I mean, it was, it was kind of all over the bag, all over the place, mixed bag.
Mr. Spinelli.
I'm going to follow Mr. Looney's lead. I'm not going to support the motion because I just believe in a science-based engineering approach, and just going with a flat 50 in the Hillside District Plan area only doesn't make sense to me, and I think it'll have a negative effect on a lot of property.
Ms. Bailey.
I just want to point out that I don't think we should punish a district for being forward-thinking in increasing those stream setbacks a while ago. What's happening is the goal of this ordinance is to increase the stream setbacks, and so what was presented in front of us was a very good balance of expanding it where they can, but then also trying to provide that buffer where it could be taking away property for someone. However, in the case of the Hillside District, they've already expanded it. And so I don't think that we should punish a district for already looking out for the preservation of their area by then saying, well, we're trying to catch up with the rest of the district, so we're going to push you back in time. And so I think that's something that we should consider. So I am still going to support my motion.
Mr. Spring.
I won't be supporting the motion. I don't, the primary purpose of the Hillside District Plan was not to establish stream setbacks. There was a lot of other issues there. I don't know how much time they spent on it, but I think this process overrides the Hillside District Plan because of the thoroughness of the process, the scientific approach of the process. I don't think there was a scientific approach of the process of the Hillside District Plan analyzing the needs for setbacks. So I think this legitimately should override the Hillside District Plan for good reasons, like I mentioned.
Please vote on the amendment to the main motion. We're back to the main motion. Anyone else wishing to speak to the main motion as originally proposed? Mr. Looney.
Last time we looked at this, that we had a couple tweaks to the text, I guess, on the recommendations on page 3. I think we looked at point 6. I think we wanted to read continuation of non-conforming, already legally constructed structures and uses within required setbacks. Is there any comment on that?
Remind me the, the page number on that.
Of the packet from February 5, it's the page 3. There, that's where the recommendations were, on page 2, 3, and 4.
I, I had in my notes, for purposes of this code chapter, legally established means legally constructed, that, that the comment that we heard wanted to insert that second legally.
Yep, that, I had that also. I had that one, as well as up above. A continuation of non-conforming, already legally constructed structures and uses within required setbacks.
Could you state that as a, as a, as a full amendment?
Okay, so I, I propose that the recommendation 6 on page 3 read, "A continuation of non-conforming, already legally constructed structures and uses within required setbacks." And the following paragraph after that, the first sentence could read, "For the purposes of this code chapter, legally established means legally constructed, permitted, and part of an approved conditional use, or part of an approved master plan."
Is there a second? Can you hit your motion and, and is there a second there? Thank you, Ms. Bailey. You want to speak to that, or just, you want me to call, call, call the vote on that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. And that, those were my notes. Does staff have any thoughts on that? Any objection to that language? Any objection to this motion? Hearing none, that, that recommendation 6 is amended. We're back to the main motion. I did have one that, you know, that I can't make, but on page 35 that I went through, and if someone, if, if people feel like it clarifies it, I would appreciate someone carrying that forward. It's that item 6 on page 35. Want us to just vote on it? Oh, we're back to the, this is back to the main motion. This is the main motion. I haven't called the question yet on, on this one. No. Let's see, just. Only if there's, if there's someone interested in, in bringing that forward. Yeah, is it? Okay.
In, in regards to the open item here, the open question on point number 6, I believe that's on page 32, 35, that we incorporate the language clarification as provided earlier by both staff and by the chair. I don't have the exact language in front of me.
Do you have it, Neil?
Through the chair, Mr. Strike. I believe it was no wider than three feet and unpaved, except where part of an urban stream restoration project.
Sounds good. Did that concur with your recollection?
Yeah.
Trails no wider.
Trails no wider.
You good with that?
I'm good with that.
So, motion to amend from Greg.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. And seconded by Ms. Bailey. Any objection to that amendment? So hearing none, that we're back to the main motion as amended. Anyone else wishing to make a further amendment or speak to the main motion? We're having a little technical issues. If you, it's not just me being slow today, folks. Okay. That's the motion, we're back to the main motion. Please vote on the main motion. Recommendation to approve that ordinance to the assembly is, is approved. That moves on to the assembly, where it sounds like staff's plan is to have work session with the full assembly and/or the Community Development Committee, right? Okay, bear with us. Are we ready to keep going, or do people need a quick break? Can we get through the road, the road deal? Everybody good? Okay. All right, let's, let's handle, before we take a quick break, but let's go to case 2017-109, Content Sensitive Solutions for Seward Highway O'Malley to Diamond Boulevard. This is not a public hearing. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. The project will construct improvements to the Seward Highway Corridor from O'Malley Road to Diamond Boulevard to address current and future travel demand and mobility needs. The improvements provide additional capacity, connectivity, and safety enhancements. The project proposes to improve the facility from a, from a controlled access divided four-lane highway to controlled access divided six-lane highway. A new grade-separated crossing at Scooter Avenue slash Academy Drive will be, will be constructed, and the Diamond Boulevard and O'Malley Road interchanges and associated ramps will be reconstructed. The project includes frontage road reconstruction, corridor noise walls, and pedestrian facilities, including separated pathways, sidewalks, and bike lanes. There was an issue with the initial design at Diamond Boulevard, the interchange there. The diverging diamond intersection raised concerns for the fire department. The fire department has Fire Station Number 12 located on Homer Drive, and they had concerns about how they were going to get through that intersection when they responded to calls going south, because they cross that intersection currently, get on the southbound ramp, and go down the Seward Highway. But that initial design raised concerns for them. Traffic Department also looked at that design, and it raised concerns for them also. So after several meetings between DOT, the fire department, and traffic department, they did reach, reach a resolution on the design solution through that intersection. And I believe you have the two options that were presented, option 1 and option 2 in your packet. And if you look through the, look at the design, you'll see a fire truck and then the pathway that it's going to take through that intersection. And the fire department prefers, prefers option number 2, and you, you have that in your packet. It's this 11 by 17 drawing. DOT, they looked at several design alternatives, and their preferred alternative is the number 3, figure 3, it's in your packet, and that one includes expanded six-lane mainline highway, diverging diamond interchanges at both O'Malley Road and the Diamond Boulevard interchanges, along with a grade-separated undercrossing at Scooter Academy, and, sorry, Scooter Avenue and Academy Drive with ramps to and from the south and roundabouts. As I mentioned earlier, there are sound walls that will be placed, as shown, generally is shown on the. is shown on the figure number three. Those are shown in your packet, kind of the red lines where they propose to put the sound barrier walls. They still have some more work to do in figuring out exactly where those are going, but I think that's a general idea of where they intend to put the sound walls. In terms of the pedestrian and bicycle improvements, the project will improve pedestrian and bicycle facilities within the project area by adding new routes and reconstructing existing routes. After construction, non-motorized users will have improved connectivity. And as far as the recommendations, I'd like to offer an amendment to condition number three on page seven of your packet. I'd like to modify it. If you turn to page 10 of your packet, the fire department had three preferences, things that they wanted to see or need to see in that intersection. And I would just like to see when, if the commission is in agreement, when whoever makes their motion could also include those three items in the motion for recommendation number three. Thank you.
So just to be clear, the fire department's memo refers to option two?
Yes.
Option two is the same as figure three?
It's, option two is shown on this 11-by-17. It's in Arial, and in the upper right-hand corner has a close-up of that intersection design.
I think it's page nine of the packet.
So, option, option two amends figure three?
Yes. For that, because they have a intersection design, it's in the, it's the last page in the bounds of middle, but they didn't go back and redesign this to show that option number two, because they submitted this earlier. So this 11-by-17, option two, shows generally the configuration of how the fire trucks are getting through that intersection, shows the pathway through it.
So you'd like that condition three to indicate, option two to amend the figure three as well as the three conditions?
Yes, and specifically on page 10 of your packet are the comments from the fire department. Do you see those three items they list?
I do.
Okay. And if those could be added to the motion for number three? And it just gives further specis, you know, I can't say that word. So that it's clear what the expectations are for that design at the intersection there?
Is that it, Sharon?
That's it.
Any other questions? Your questions to staff? Mr. Gardner?
Thank you. I just had, I guess, one question for further my understanding here. There's a couple of references here. I'm trying to find where one of them is. I apologize. But to, I think it's removing the southbound on-ramp from Diamond in order to make room for the southbound off-ramp on Scooter. And I hope I'm not wrong in saying this, but I think you can currently get off southbound on Scooter from the Seward Highway. Is that right? And so is the reason that you need to remove the Diamond southbound is just a function of the spacing with respect to the new interchange types? Is that why that, you can no longer have an onbound going south from Diamond?
Through the chair, Mr. Gardner, your question would be better directed to DOT representatives who are coming up in just a moment.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Do you guys have a presentation or you just want to respond to questions? You can come forward.
Sean Baskey, project manager for the Department of Transportation, B-A-S-K-I. Thank you to the commission for allowing us to come in and be considered for the project. I can go through a presentation if you want, or I can go straight to questions. Certainly, there's additional information that you can get from the presentation that may not be in the packet, but...
No, go ahead.
So, with me here today, I also have Randy Vanderwood, who's the project engineer for the Department of Transportation on the project, Jim Potts, who is the project manager or consultant designing the project, Jacobs, Dave Gammez, who's a designer for Jacobs, and Rachel Steer, who's with Dow, who is our public involvement specialist. So this project is, has a great purpose and need. There's a lot of issues associated with the O'Malley to Diamond section, so I'll just rehash some of those. We've got the capacity issues at the Diamond and O'Malley interchanges, which anybody that's driven through some of those interchanges at certain times of the day, it backs up, you know, especially at O'Malley, you know, heading eastbound. Sometimes it'll go all the way back to the railroad, you know, over crossing there. And so we've got certainly some capacity issues. There's also connectivity issues, which we covered last time we were here going over the concept report in February of 2017, and there were a number of comments about connectivity issues. We've got pedestrians or youth crossing the highway. They cut that fence every single time the department goes out there and tries to fix it. We've got that stop-gap project that's, you know, fixing, hopefully trying to deter youth from crossing the highway there. But, you know, all of that leads us to realize, of course, as a community, that we've got a cross-corridor connectivity issue that we need to address. And then, of course, there's safety concerns along that corridor. We've got, we did a five-year study that looked at crashes throughout the corridor, and we had 48 crashes along the highway in that section. Seventeen of those resulted in injuries. So whenever we talk about safety and injuries, I always like to share my family's stories. So my wife was in what we would term a minor injury accident. She injured her back, and she couldn't pick up our one-year-old child at the time. And so, you know, every single crash carries with it a story. And so every crash is important to try to reduce or eliminate. But then, when you look at where you'd expect most of your crashes, at the interchanges at O'Malley and Diamond, and the ramping and all the rest of it, we had 953 crashes in that five-year period, with 297 of those being injuries. So. And then we've also certainly got some non-motorized or bicycle pedestrian things that we need to address. We've got some memorable crashes with some bicyclists and others, certainly around the Diamond interchange. There's some concerns around there. So to address all of that, we've got the, you know, Ms. Ferguson shared the improvements. We've got six-lane dividing it. We've got capacity improvements at O'Malley and Diamond with the diverging Diamond interchanges. I would just say that the department proactively went to the fire department as soon as we were deciding on what interchange to move forward with. And the diverging Diamond interchange does have a number of drawbacks, just like every interchange does have. And we proactively brought the issue of the throughput traffic to the fire department. That was the only reason why they raised the concerns. And so we were proactive in that discussion. And, you know, a number of the figures and other things, this is a 35% design, or, you know, we've advanced it to the, you know, the design stage that's appropriate to provide the draft ESR to the commission. And so, you know, these are, these are concept, just beyond concept level, design plans. So, other things, we've got the interchange at 92nd Avenue or Scooter and Vanguard, which provides cross-corridor connectivity. That has been envisioned in the long-range transportation plan since the 90s. So it's just, you know, building what the community has desired for many decades now. It provides, obviously, that pedestrian cross-corridor connectivity. And then we've got additional bicycle and pedestrian amenities along the frontage road on Brayton, which we talked last February about some of those and concerns that we had about others on other phases and the narrowness of, you know, sidewalks and other things. But, you know, we're hemmed in by right-of-way, and so it's either buy out all the houses that are adjacent to it, or the businesses, or, you know, provide what we can fit within that space. I would say that this is the first registered green roads project outside of the pilot project that the Department of Transportation advanced a couple of years ago. And it's, Green Roads, if you're not familiar with it, is like LEED certification kind of stuff, but for roads. And so it's looking at sustainable opportunities to advance. We've certainly got noise walls like Ms. Ferguson mentioned, and detention ponds and all the rest of it, trying to address things and bring them up to current standards. Other than that, we've had lots of public involvement with the community, gone and talked to the community councils that are right there, immediately affected by it, and then neighboring ones outside of it. And so we've been very active in the community, bringing it forward. Other than that, I can address comments and questions.
Mr. Gardner, did you get your question answered?
Well, I think it's probably...
Oh, yeah. Right, the spacing of the two ramps. So you can't have an on-ramp and an off-ramp within that close of proximity. It's just, it won't work. So you've got to choose one or the other. And one of the opportunities that's provided by Academy and Vanguard, that interchange, relieves some of the capacity issues at Diamond.
Mr. Spring?
Yeah, this is probably not really relevant to this phase of the project, but I noticed there's, back on, there's not a page number, but I think it's the, talking about the Taku Campbell Community Council presentation. And are you sure that there's 40,000 to 50,000 ADT on this section between Diamond and O'Malley? Because I looked up the ADT on the state website, and I think it said it was like 34,212. And then you go further and say, well, it's going to double by 2040. It's not in the document itself, but it was presented to the public. So I think, I don't know, is the number wrong? I mean, it's not, it didn't look like it was 40,000 to 50,000. And also, I have my real doubts about doubling the traffic in 2040, because I don't know where they're going to be coming from. We've analyzed land use, and that's our job, is to be land use review primarily for this type of document. There's, you know, the growth in, you know, the southeast isn't going to be that strong. I just don't see where this statement came from, doubling. Is it the model? If it's the model, I would suspect the model is wrong, but do you know anything about how that was developed?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Through the chair. So when we're designing our roads, we don't design for today's ADTs, right, or traffic volumes. We design for the design life of the facility, so we're looking out there 15 to 20 years. And when the project was advancing the studies or the traffic analysis, we used the municipality of Anchorage's baseline and their studies to develop, you know, our models. And so, you know, if there's concern about, you know, the projections or land use development and growth, then really we would have to go back and re-figure them for something that's not in conformance with the municipality's land use and modeling.
Yeah, that's appropriate, to use the AMATs model. But the AMATs model's changed quite a bit the last couple of years it was updated. I don't know which model you're using. The previous model showed a significant, larger growth projection than the current model. And the current model is probably much more accurate because of, as we all know, we're in recession, and there has been no growth whatsoever in the population. In fact, we lost population. I hesitated to bring this up because it is too late. We can't do anything about it. But I wouldn't be presenting to the community councils information like this unless you could, it's consistent with the existing model, and the ADTs were correct. I mean, gives the false impression of significantly more traffic than really exists now or will exist in the future. Doubling is, in 15 years, is a lot of traffic. You're talking basically 100,000 trips per day between Diamond and O'Malley, and that's just not going to happen. They don't even think, that would, that's more in line with the highway-to-highway project, 100,000. So I just, I'm trying to make a helpful suggestion, not criticize you, but I hope you don't...
Thanks, John. Any other questions on the, on the design or the study? The diamonds on Diamond? Anybody? Good? Like that, huh? All right. Thank you for your presentation. I think it sounds like we're good here. Can I get a motion to approve? Mr. Looney?
Sure. In the case of 2017-0109, for the draft design study report for the Seward Highway, O'Malley to Diamond, I move that we approve it. It appears that, we can discuss it later.
Brian, are you, are you bringing, are you amending the recommendations to include the three conditions that Ms. Ferguson brought up?
I'm sorry, exactly. So, including the recommendations from staff, the three listed on page six and seven, and include the three points on the page 10 of the memo from the fire department.
Thank you. Greg, that's good with you? Seconded by Mr. Strike. Okay. Would you like to speak to that motion, Mr. Looney?
I think that the DSR does a great job, of course, to address the capacity and the connectivity and the safety. And I definitely understand what Commissioner Spring is saying, but just from my experience in that area, I definitely have seen where the Diamond area experiences congestion almost on a daily basis. So I think you're a lot more informative with the model, but I just, I know what I see out there, and it definitely needs it now, and in 30 years, it's going to need it for sure. So I'm ready for it.
Thank you, Mr. Looney. Mr. Strike?
Yes, and I would echo what Commissioner Looney had also made, but I'd also point out, you see the benefits of having had previous discussions as we've gone through this. This was not the first time we've seen this, discussed it, and so forth. So many in the audience may say, hey, we didn't spend much time and so forth, but we were familiar with the project. We've seen this before us, and this is a process. So I want to thank the presenter for his time tonight and the time that he spent with us in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. Please vote. Thanks for your time here this evening. Appreciate it. Andre, wake up. That motion is approved. We're going to take a really quick five-minute break. I know, thank you, everyone, for your patience, and we'll get back to the next two cases following that. Thank you.
... And, so, you know, and so they had, you service guy, stayed for, and he told him that he was, you know, and so then he said, I'm going to tell her.
Hey, John, do, do you need me to call security? All right, next up is case 2018-40, conditional use for off-street parking in the R3 mixed residential district for the Alaska Sausage Company Incorporated, generally located north of West 30th, 30th Avenue, east of Spinnard Road, south of West 29th and west of Arctic. Do we have a staff presentation, please?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for conditional use approval for off-street parking in the R3 mixed residential district. The petition site was approved previously for, uh, a parking lot. Uh, since the original approval has expired, the owner must seek reapproval of this conditional use for off-street parking. There are two other forthcoming applications, um, at this site. One is for subdivision and one is for, uh, conditional use for commercial food production because they want to expand the Alaska sausage, uh, building or connect the two buildings that exist on the, on their commercially zoned, uh, lots currently. Code requires that, uh, the landscape plan be done by a registered professional surveyor. Uh, one wasn't completed in time for this application, so, um, when you look to the conditions of approval, uh, recommended by the department, we have a condition, uh, related to, uh, providing the landscape plan. Um, none of the reviewing, uh, agencies objected to, um, this application. Um, there were three hundred and fifty-nine public hearing notices mailed on March 22nd. No responses were received from the public. The Spinnard Community Council did not comment. Um, the department finds that policies seven, fourteen and fifty are, um, of Anchorage 2020 are implemented through, um, the application before you. We find that all of the, um, nine standards of approval, um, are met. The department's recommending approval of this application, um, for, uh, conditional use for off-street parking in the R3 district, subject to conditions one through three on page, uh, five of your packet. Um, you know, we find that this, uh, meets the code and, um, during a site visit, I noticed that there was, uh, thriving vegetation along the perimeter of the, the parking lot. Um, we would only wish that, that, uh, parking lot perimeter landscaping would look this good. It's really, um, very nice, um, landscaping on three sides of this property. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions and the applicants here as well to make a presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Strike?
Yes, thank you. I note that this was before the commission in 2002 and at that time there were eight recommendations that were presented by the commission, um, and today we see three. The prior eight recommendations, were those implemented?
Um, well, um, the previous approval, there is not documentation in the file that, um, they, uh, that the applicant provided the planning department information, uh, that these conditions of approval were met.
The conditions for the approval were met?
Oh, no, I, I'm saying, so on page twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five of your packet is the old approval.
Correct.
That's the resolution and we have, um, no documentation showing that these conditions, um, were met. See, after you make approval of something, then, um, the applicant has to go follow through and meet the conditions and we don't have any record that they provided us, uh, information. There's usually a signature and, and proof that, that, that that condition of approval was met. We, we don't have that.
That would be a question that we could ask the petitioner is whether or not they had, what of those recommendations previously have been followed through and completed?
Right.
Correct?
Okay.
The, I note on that, um, street, I think it's 30th, the only spot on 30th Avenue that has any no parking signs on 30th Avenue are the, are signs that are adjacent to or adjacent to this property site. Any clarification, anything from traffic, why the right side of the street only on 30th Avenue in this block, the part, part of the block is the only area that prohibits on-street Another question for the petitioner? I'm wondering if those are even municipal signs and reading the news of late, a lot of people have been putting up signs. I'm wondering if these are valid signs?
So, um, we, we had a pre-application conference, not only with this case, um, but with the, uh, subdivision, uh, case that's been submitted and with the, um, condition, the conditional use for, uh, commercial food production that is forthcoming. We've had pre-applicat-, so we've had a number of meetings on this and we discussed, uh, the condition of the road, um, on both sides of the property, but, uh, and, and we, I'm, I'm trying to remember if we talked about parking signs, maybe, uh, Ron Thompson, the applicant's representative will remember our discussion on that. I, I can't remember, um, discussion about no parking signs.
Yeah, well, I'm encouraged that we're having new development and everything taking place. I just want to make sure that we're moving forward properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. Um, just a quick question. You made the comment about that the landscape plan was not done by a registered professional landscape architect. Does it otherwise meet the conditions as required? Is the landscape plan valid other than it doesn't have a stamp?
Yeah.
But that's something we feel is important. I mean, we got a good plan, but we need the stamp.
You know, it's my job to enforce...
I get it, no, I'm just, is it a problem? Do we get it a lot?
They, they've subsequent done, uh, a landscape plan.
Gotcha, okay. Mr. Spring?
Uh, yes, uh, I was disappointed that there wasn't a, any traffic comments. This, is that typical? Is it, I thought traffic always made comments.
Um, Mr. Spring, um, allow me to, uh, request to speak in a moment. I, to look up, uh, traffic's comments, um, or whatever. I need to grab the file and it'll just take a moment.
Okay. I just didn't see on the packet.
Francis, is it okay if I bring the petitioner up while you're doing that? Okay. Ron, if you want to come up?
Thank you. My name's Ron Thompson, uh, representing Alaska Sausage, um, on this conditional use.
Hey, Ron, just real quick, I realized I didn't, uh, read the full, uh, procedure for the public hearing, so let me just do that and then I'll get you started. Um, after staff presentation, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including his or her representatives, ten minutes and part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils, five minutes and individuals, three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within twenty days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Thanks, go ahead.
Yeah, um, the reason the landscape plan hadn't been provided at the time of application was because it was in question of whether or not we had a thousand square foot additional landscaping that we needed. So in this case, we barely went over the thousand, so we've got a approved stamped, um, or in a, a landscape plan that's stamped by a licensed, uh, landscape architect that we will go through the process of getting the permit, which is the condition, um, that Francis was talking about, which is pretty standard. We got to go through that process anyway and make sure that we have all that, um, codes covered with regard to that. Uh, you talked about traffic comments, um, tra-, the standard traffic comments came up at the meeting that, uh, loading berth, the, um, vehicle access in and out, uh, the access and all that on the old conditions were handled and addressed on, under the old permit. Just to, just to let you know, this permit, uh, conditional use was approved in 2002. They built approximately, um, three-quarters of the project. They only didn't pave two lots. All the landscaping was installed, uh, back then. They paved the two lots, um, and then everything, um, got outside of the ten-year window and therefore we're back here getting the reapproval of the same scenario, but the landscaping now has to meet the present code, so the new landscape plan shows the old landscaping and what's also needed and required in the new landscaping and so that will be, um, approved. And like Francis said, it's, you know, these are some forty-foot mature trees, it's very nicely kept and, and cleaned up. Um, the other thing is part of the old conditional use had to do with, um, replodding. So in this process, we're in the process and I think Francis mentioned it, we'll be, we're taking the three R3 lots and combining them into one lot and the four, or the four R3 lots can be, can be, combining them into one lot and the four B3 lots will be combined into one lot in the same plodding process. So we're going through that public process as well, right now and like he said also, as part of this, even though, um, old Title 21 by right, you could be a food processing and a B3, it's now a conditional use, so since we're adding some square footage, we'll be coming in the future on that. But we wanted to get the parking lot done because of timing and how we, um, construct this project, we're trying to get the parking lot done this summer and then we'll start on the, the remodel, um, this fall outside of the, the busy timeframe for their, um, business. So with that, I mean, I'm here to ask, answer any questions, but I believe, um, what I see in those eight conditions, I think, uh, you were asking, I, I believe all of those conditions have to do with landscape plan, egress and all those things that we will be complying with and handling, so.
You have about seven minutes remaining. Uh, Mr. Strike, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. Uh, your, your first comment was in regard to the landscape architect stamp and so I was unclear, the original requirements for that stamp were or were not met?
Say that again, the original...
The original requirements for the architectural stamp for the, uh, landscape was or was not met?
There was question of whether or not we were over or under the thousand square foot that requires the stamp. We felt that we thought we were under it, but based upon the interior square footage, the calculation came in at approximately a thousand eighty-one square feet of landscaping. I believe that was the number, therefore...
Was that when it was taken into account, the four lots or the two lots?
Anything you guys are talking about, you're, are you talking in 2002 and Mr.?
In 2002, um, you know...
Here's where I'm going at. I'm trying to ascertain if what conditions of the eight conditions that the prior commission placed on this approval of the condition, of this, of your approval have or have not been met?
There was not a landscape architect requirement back in the old code. The new code came out, therefore we are meeting it with the landscape architect stamp plan now.
Construction number eight, provide a redesigned landscape plan to resolve the site distance program, problems at parking lot entrance that meet Title 21 parking lot landscaping requirements and referred to in the testimony that the petitioner was cautioned that the state law requires a landscape architect stamp these plans.
Two issue, two issues, uh, just to clarify, so that, that is a condition from 2002. Um, the petitioner's comment is that in 2002, while there, there is a condition for a landscape plan, there was not a condition that the landscape plan be a stamped landscaped architect. That's a function of the new Title 21 code. There's, there's two issues.
I'm just reading the notes from it and that's number six on page twenty-three.
I can add, there, there was an approved plan back in 2002 and they constructed to that plan that was approved by the building department and the zoning department for landscaping, egress, access, all of those issues that you're talking about. Then now today, that was stamped by an architect because that's what was legal at the time. Now, a landscape architect needs to stamp the site plan and we have that as well now.
It looks like the prior commission required a bond be placed for both phases of the project. Was that done?
I wasn't part of the project in 2000, I would, I don't know if it was. That, that usually that would be a part of the building department's requirement to get a permit to build it and construct it.
No, I'm asking that you as a petitioner, in the prior period where this was approved, prior to the issuance of any building permits for the parking lot, the petitioner shall submit proof of financial capability to complete the landscaping and parking lot for each phase. The proof shall be in the amount of one hundred and ten percent of the engineer's estimate for completion and in the form of a bond, interest-bearing account, performance guarantee or letter of credit. Was that done for either of the two phases?
Martin was not the owner back then and I...
What I'm trying to ascertain is with the conditions that were placed in 2002, you as the petitioner, same owners and different operators, I understand, family business, as new requirements are coming forth, I want to know if you've performed as you would say in the past, so we have the confidence that you're going to perform as you agree to in the future. And right now, as I read this, you haven't done half, roughly half of the conditions that were initially placed on you on the previous one.
I can only assume that the building department would not issue a permit unless they met those conditions.
Who was in the building department doing that at that time?
I was the building official.
Yeah.
But that didn't mean if in the zoning issue, the zoning, everybody has the...
Where's the bond? Now, it's a rhetorical question...
They may have had a bond, I don't, I, I mean, we can't say that they didn't, I can only assume...
I'm going to get argumentative. Well, it's a question that I need to, we need to address separately with the city.
I've never, just to answer that, I've never seen many bonds placed on individuals for this type of construction and this type of progress either, so I, I don't know if they did because I, I don't have record of that, but we can get you that answer, but I also don't see that issue placed on many folks at all ever either, so, so it's interesting to hear that when you say that, but, I mean, we weren't part of the project then.
Okay. Um, what I want to do is get comfortable that whatever is in place, the petitioner agrees to do, that whatever restrictions, requirements, recommendations and so forth, that they're followed through. Now that's pointed both at the petitioner and at the city.
Correct. And I would say the same rules apply to everybody in this situation. In this case, we're going to build this parking lot very soon.
And if you were there before in that position, when this hit you, shame on you.
Okay.
Well, Greg, I mean, what, what we got here is a, um, my understanding is they're coming forward for a, uh, conditional use permit because they can't go forward and get a building permit until they've gotten their conditional use permit.
Correct.
Up to date, right, which is why they're here today.
Agree.
Okay.
Part of this is the character of the petitioner as they come forward, that they're going to do what they say they're going to do. No one's put on oath, no one sits up here and swears, no one has any requirements, but for some reason the commission, back in 2002, had a grave concern that this was not going to be followed through. There was, there was concerns regarding financial solvency, abilities or whatever, that they went out there and requested and required a bond, which is extremely unusual.
It's unusual, but I would also just suggest that the approval criteria is, is the approval criteria. I mean, the approval criteria doesn't even ask us to look at previous cases. It's not part of the approval criteria.
Well, unfortunate, we've got some history...
Well, it's unfortunate that we don't enforce any of these things as a municipality either. That's also unfortunate, right?
Part of that, I think, is incumbent upon this commission, if there, if there's these issues, that there at least be some teeth, some bite to the recommendations put forth. Otherwise, it's an approval based on a recommendation, therefore if the recommendations aren't followed, there's no approval.
And, and all I would suggest is we have clear criteria in front of us to evaluate.
I mean, I can answer, answer, lend us, one little comment. If you want to say that, we can say that, but you might want to talk to the municipality as well because they have not produced their parking lot landscaping as the code requires either. So I'm just, so I, I agree with you, I completely agree with the comment that we need to be following up, making sure things happen, but at the same time, that's an old...
One case at a time and you're the case...
That is a very old...
Hold on, hold on, can I ask, um, can you get a final CO until this parking lot is completed?
No.
You won't be able to get a final CO until this parking lot is completed. I understand, but I'm suggesting that they won't be able to actually get a final CO on the permit they're trying to get as it relates to this conditional use until they've actually made the improvement.
Who at that point in time would...
I'm suggesting we have to understand where our levers are and, and our enforcement is as a municipality. I see, I, I don't know what happened in 2002, I don't know why the project didn't, wasn't completed, but I'm evaluating...
I mean, I can answer, lend us one little comment. If you want to say that, we can say that, but you might want to talk to the municipality as well, because they have not produced their parking lot landscaping as the code requires either. So, I'm just, so, I agree with you. I completely agree with the comment that we need to be following up, making sure things happen, but at the same time, that's an old...
One case at a time, and you're the case...
That is a very old...
Hold on, hold on. Can I ask, can you get a final CO until this parking lot is completed?
No.
You won't be able to get a final CO until this parking lot is completed. I understand, but I'm suggesting that they won't be able to actually get a final CO on the permit they're trying to get as it relates to this conditional use until they've actually made the improvement.
Who at that point in time would...
I'm suggesting we have to understand where our levers are and our enforcement is as a municipality. I see, I don't know what happened in 2002. I don't know why the project didn't, wasn't completed, but I'm evaluating the project as it's proposed today and understanding that we have to determine that they meet the nine criteria in the plan, right?
Mm-hmm.
Beyond that, whether they comply with their conditional use permit is a function of the municipality and code enforcement saying that they've actually done it and kept it up.
And if we have history that prior conditions have not been met, that can weigh into our deliberation as well.
Maybe, although I don't see a criteria that says that that's up, that's part of the conditions. I mean, it's a question for staff, if you want to ask that question.
No, I'm...
Is it previous non-performance, can it be, can it be, you know, part of the analysis? Mr. McLaughlin, help us out.
Look, while Mr. Strike's comments are well-taken and fair, I, I have no concerns that this applicant will not follow through in satisfying the conditions of approval placed on them by the commission this evening, the future case that you will see in a few months, and the plating officer is here, he will be reviewing the subdivision that's been submitted. I can't speak for building permitting, but I also have faith that they will do their jobs and ensure that what is constructed matches the approved plans that you're approving tonight. So, while these are, this is a very good discussion, I, I just, the bottom line is that I, I think that they're going to build what they say they're going to build, and it's in their interest to do it, and we have those sort of checks in place.
And I'll, and thank you very much, and I will leave it at, to the petitioner as well. Part of this is firing for effect. Part of this is for the effect that the staff sees that there's an issue, and part of this is fire effect for the petitioner, we're going to be watching. The, what had happened before has got to change. Whoever was in place before, not minding the store, wasn't doing their job, and that's got to change. Thank you.
And it's good to know that we don't need bonds anymore, we just need Mr. McLaughlin's word, because I think that's what I, that I heard here tonight. Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I think that if they don't follow through on building the parking lot, they're not, there wouldn't be, I think a condition of a future conditional use or plating action would be that the parking lot is complete, because they're going to be required to have more parking spaces.
But, the counterpoint is, that's not before us right now. The plating and the construction is not before us.
Exactly, and right now, I think they're, they're not going to be able to use that parking lot unless they complete it, right?
Anyways, okay. It's a vacant lot right now that they can go and park a truck on there if they want.
Okay. Are there, I'm going to stop. Are there other questions for the petitioner, in particular related to the plan that's Okay, you got seven minutes for rebuttal. Thanks, Ron. I'm going to open the public hearing. Stand by. Anybody wishing to testify in this case, come on forward. Anybody at all? Don't go far. Parking lots? Spinnard? Anybody? All right, Mr. Thompson, any, any final, final thoughts?
I guess I'd like to explain myself with regard to being what the building official does, because I feel like I was a little bit attacked there and saying that when I worked there, I didn't do my job. I did my job. That would be a comment by the zoning plan review staff to comment with regard to bonds. It is what it is. We issue permits and we do it. Right now, I'm working for a client that is trying to finish a project. We met with the city, we're meeting every condition, and we approve and appreciate the fact that we're talking about the issue, and most of the people up here dealt with the issue, not a personal attack. But, at the end of the day, I understand why it was made, but at the end of the day, it's not a normal condition. It's normally caught in the plan review. If it wasn't caught in the plan review, I don't know what happened. I would assume that they did do their job, that they did require it, and at the end of the day, the owner came back and couldn't get it done because they didn't have money. Some people don't have the money at certain times to get things done. Then, guess what? That's why we're back here to do another conditional use. If they would have built it and it would have been done, they wouldn't have to come back. So, the next time, I'd like to stick to specific topics and not try to get personal attacks in the middle of a presentation like this.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Just stand, stand, say, hold on, hold on. Go ahead, and then I got something for you too.
On the eight recommendations that were made in 2002, do you have any issue with those same eight recommendations being carried over and being applicable to the approval For example, has a snow storage plan and drainage plan for review and approval?
You cannot get a permit without a snow storage plan.
Yep.
Any others?
So, you don't have a problem with that being a...
No, it's part of the code requirement.
Are there any of the eight recommendations that were made in 2002 by this commission that you...
I object to a bond.
Okay, fair enough. Anything else?
I have no idea, honestly, Mr. Strike, if those are even consistent with the code anymore. I mean, I don't know. I know, but I don't know. So, I, I mean, we're going to have to walk through amendment by amendment and understand what it is, but I can't tell.
They dealt with the driveway accesses. We shouldn't have to deal with driveway access again, because they dealt with that.
That was on Lot Five? So, a question to the staff of the original eight, taken out the bond, which of those seven still apply today based on the current code?
I think the three that Francis recommended are the three that we should be discussing here.
Mr. Strike, I thank you for the question, and it does appear weird that in an old approval, you had many conditions of approval, and in this new case, you do not. The code has changed since back then, and so, many of these requirements that were made back then are now shown in the new drawing. So, what are these applications? They're more than just words and standards and codes. What, what I do is, the picture is the most important thing to me, really. I look at the landscape plan, the site plan, and the design standards for parking lots in Chapter Seven, and I look at all of those dimensions and count trees and calipers and, you know, heights and all of that, and I decide, does this drawing meet all the requirements of code? And it does, sans the landscape architect stamp. So, it just, it's kind of an apples and oranges thing. I didn't want to really get into comparing it with the, you know, we can just get, spend so much time discussing these details, but, but what I've done is thoroughly evaluated the, the site plan shown, and it meets the code requirements, and, yeah, that's, that's where we're at.
And what I'm trying to prevent is that half the, half the property has been developed pretty much pursuant to the previous request in 2002. Today, we're in there because half, the other two lots were not conducted, were not completed. With this before us today, we're changing all four lots requirements, whether it be lighting requirements, whether it be, the fencing requirements goes away? Certain landscaping substitutes for fencing? Because we're no longer saying that four-foot fence or that wooden fence on the north side is, has to be in place as a condition for this request. So, we're doing away with that.
Yes.
Is that the intent?
Yes. Through the chair, Mr. Strike, this is a very similar situation to what we saw a couple months ago with the conditional use for off-street parking behind the Northern Lights Village Mall, you know, across from the Northern Lights Center, REI Mall, that mall on the north side of Northern Lights Boulevard. So, it's a mall in front, and it had its, it has its parking in the back. They came before you asking for a conditional use for their off-street parking in the back there, so that they could open up the Chicken Shack Restaurant, was being held up by this parking problem, right? And it was, I know the details to that case where, you know, thirty years ago or twenty years ago, there was a condition of approval to build a fence, and the fence wasn't there. It was a condition of approval to have so many trees spaced a certain distance and how many shrubs per tree. All those things, I mean, I, I looked at those and evaluated those, but, you know, those requirements that were placed on the original approval are not the same requirements that are in code today. And to make it simple for the audience, for the public, for the applicant, for the commission, I'm just going by the code that's in effect now. Now, I looked at those old things, and, you know, do we need those fences and that? Well, when I walked the site, and I've been there twice, I, I feel like I only have the authority, really, to enforce the code that we have today. That was adopted by the assembly. That's the code. That's what they've met, and I, I mean, I guess if I felt like there was a need to go over and above the code, I would share it with you all, but I, they met the code requirement, and that's the rules that everybody plays by.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Anything else?
The no parking signs on the north side of 30th Avenue.
No parking signs are in right-of-way, and those are always governed by traffic, so you might want to talk to the traffic department.
Okay.
They're not placed there by the owner.
On all of 30th, that's the only place, there's only any no parking signs.
It's a traffic department, traffic engineer decision where no parking signs go in the right-of-way.
I've had customers want to park there, and I, we didn't put them there.
Okay, yeah, that we, if we, that's off the record, because we can't, we can't record it. Mr. McLaughlin, were you back in there?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Ron, I had a real basic one, and it really is just out of curiosity more than anything. Why not just plat it all into one thing and rezone it? Is it more challenging and more costly to go that route, and this is a simpler avenue? I'm just curious.
Well, the issue ends up being Spinnard Community Council has a zero rezone approval for decreasing residential lots in their community council.
But the...
And they support this, they said this is the way to go, we'd like to see it that way.
I mean, it's, it's not that it's, you're doing anything that's not, you're not entitled to. You're following the, I just was curious about cleaning the whole thing up, but...
Yeah, no, yeah. We tried to clean it up as best we can with the, the rules that are in effect and the approving authorities, as well as the supporting community council in the area. They recommended, we met with them, we talked with them, they definitely do not support reducing any residential zoning in their community council, and, but, they do support this, and they supported it unanimously to do this, and, and they appreciate Alaska Sausage in their community council.
Just so I'm clear on the record, Francis had said earlier that they just had a, not, there was no objection. Did they actually have a resolution supporting? I didn't disclose this, but I think I was actually there that night, so, sorry, I was there for something else, but I don't remember.
They actually speak up, and they say, is there no objection to this, and they move it forward.
That's, I just wanted to make sure. You said support, and they said no objection. Sort of the same thing, but I just wanted to be clear if we indicate it for the record earlier or later.
Mr. Chair, the applicant and the file, nothing was received from the Spinnard Community Council, period.
Okay.
In writing or spoken.
I see no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's the will of the body? Mr. Spring?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on my original question to staff regarding traffic comments.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Spring, for allowing me the time to look this up. So, the traffic department did provide comments. They were submitted after the staff report was signed, so the comments were received late. I, so, I apologize profusely for traffic's comments not being included in the packet before you today. I take responsibility for that. Trying to figure out how in my process that this was possible to happen, because this should never happen, it, as it turns out, the traffic engineer was on a vacation, and then I recently took a family vacation, and the timing of it must have lined up perfectly that this got missed. It's, it's my job to get it in, and I'm sorry. So, the traffic department says that they're going to have to, with a building permit, construct a sidewalk on 30th Avenue along both their B3 side of the property, the commercial building, Alaska Sausage, and this off-street parking lot that's before you today. It also says that they have to prove up that their, the new building will have a Type A loading berth. They want to, the traffic engineer wants to see on the, the plans that the landscape islands will be on a curbed, in a curbed, barrier curb bed. They want to evaluate with the building permit the lighting for the parking lot, and they want a bike rack also at the commercial building because of the number of parking spaces. So, those are things that we'll be looking into after tonight, and there are catches for these that I don't believe they need to be added as conditions of approval for this.
I would argue that a sidewalk along parking lot is sort of essential, right? Jared, you're in there, you're about this, or you, go ahead.
Well, I think it might ultimately end up being related, but I had a question about, on page eleven of the packet, there's a comment, or, yeah, I guess from the plan review engineer, Brandon Telford, and it says that the proposed development will eliminate the Arctic Boulevard access, and I assume that's referring to the, the expansion of the, the building, and alerts the petitioner to the possibility of required improvements to West 30th Avenue under what I think would be the fourth, the applications that we're expecting to receive in the next few months, I think you mentioned. And I'm just wondering if there's any, any risk that any kind of conditions or requirements for those applications will, will require changes to the proposed parking lot that we're looking at here? Is that something we need to be concerned about?
No. You know, thank you, Mr. Gardner. The comments from all the reviewing agencies, the applicants heard three times, and we, at our last meeting, thoroughly discussed a timeline for the improvements to make sure they all got done, and the municipality, the reviewing agencies that met with the applicant were concerned in making sure that they would be completed on time and that we had protections that they would be built. And we, we, we were comfortable with the timeline, and we believe that all the improvements that would be required of any commercial development will be, and that this plan that you see before you tonight is not going to change.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Spring?
Yeah, so, the loading berth, they said that the loading berth was not shown on this, on the site plan?
Well, we discussed, we believe that there's a Type A loading berth on the north side of the building, but it wasn't labeled on the plan, so it may just be, it need to be labeled, but we'll, we'll work with them on that, and, and we actually talked about it last week.
Yeah, okay. Well, what I'm trying to get at is, I want to make sure this site plan is, we approve a site plan that is final. If there's a bike rack that should be shown on there, we should show it. If there's a berth, a loading berth that's, involves this lots four, five, six, and seven, which is the site plan we're approving, right?
Mm-hmm.
That they should be shown there.
Well, I mean, there's a separate case that's going to be coming forward for, they've already submitted a building permit for the expansion of the building, and some of these items will be hooked to the commercial building. So, in, in some ways, these comments are telegraphing that these requirements will be triggered, not by conditional use for off-street parking, but by the expansion of the commercial building, conditional use for, for commercial food production in the B3 district.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson?
Are any of the traffic engineers' comments not a requirement per code to get a permit for a parking lot?
I don't understand the question. Can you repeat it?
When, when they submit to get a building permit... When, when they submit to get a building permit to build the parking lot, are the requirements for a, a loading berth and the bike racks?
Yeah, these are all requirement, yeah, this is identi, that, so-
Right, our approval isn't for the site plan or for, it's for the use as a parking area?
Well, it's for both, but through the chair, Mr. Anderson, this is something probably worth knowing. While the, the site plan that you're reviewing and approving with this conditional use, further detail happens at the building permit stage because the building permit will include grades of things like the ADA accessible ramps and, you know, the type of curb and signage, you know, no parking signs. So while you're seeing 90% of the picture, at the building permit stage, there is some greater detail that the traffic engineer may go into. So what I was initially going to say to Seth was that, you know, these comments are identical to the comments that Mr. Thompson sees on the building permit that he's processing now.
Well, hold on a sec, Francis, but like, let's just get to the point here, though. The petitioner said they're going to come in separately for a permit for the parking lot and get that done. That is, I mean, I think that's what I heard. That's one permit. The building later is another permit. I think the question is, if there's some requirement to do something associated with the building, but, but they come in first with this, I mean, we're just trying to put the whole thing together as, as you are. So if later they come in and the building, and the separate question is why do they have to build a sidewalk? But if they just came in for this conditional use permit for the parking lot and nothing else, would they have to have built a sidewalk? And if the answer is no, then they're going to go forward and build this out because they're allowed to. And then separately, then you're going to come back and then tell them at the building permit stage to come build a sidewalk after they've already, I mean, it's a, it's a, tell me how to, how to proceed in some, first of all, and I appreciate the apology, but that comment was sort of like the most substantial comment that, of the whole, the whole thing.
So it's my understanding that the applicant is elected to go with one building permit in phases. So it'll all be tied to one building permit. The, the subdivision will have a condition of approval on it to, to build the sidewalk. That's typically when we get improvements to, within the right-of-way. Could it be applied to this? It could, but I believe that some of these conditions of approval should be delayed to either the plat or the conditional use for commercial food production.
But, but, but the comment was what? Can you read the comment again from traffic related to this permit?
Construction of sidewalks will be required along the front edge of West 30th Avenue for both the B3 zone lot and the R3 zone lot per Chapter 7, subsection 60E2, which is about, you know, it's about building sidewalks along the, the front of your commercial development.
And is that in dispute? Are you planning on doing that?
Excuse me, this is wrong again. If it was a requirement of the code, absolutely.
So we've got a requirement in a-
The comments came in late.
Yeah, I agree.
He, he didn't give us comments until, I think last week is when we finally met and got the comments. So we've been, and I've been out of town since that meeting till tonight. So basically, Randy's pretty good at what he does. We go, we meet, we meet those requirements, we submit plans that meet those things in code and we build that. So if it's in code, absolutely. If it's not in code and we have a discussion, we'll work with Randy and resolve that through Randy. But if it's a, if he's correct in his assumption, then absolutely we'll have to build that to get the permit.
So right now, the, the plan that you've submitted shows a sidewalk on the building, but not along the parking lot? I mean, it looks like what I have.
I, I think that might be the case, yeah, but we, we have, the landscape plan has re, come back and redrawn that plan different than the one that you have because it has these end aisles that they're talking about in traffic. It has all of the things that Randy, he, he'd already met with Randy and talked to him. So the, I believe our professional landscape architect has worked those things out with Randy and we will be submitting the same, and that's what we're doing. We want the same plan going to-
Yeah, and you can appreciate our concern. We want to know what we're approving here tonight.
Absolutely, yeah. And my understanding was the plan, the condition is it needs to go get approved from all those agencies that do it, that this isn't a site plan review, it's the conditional use.
Yeah, but it, it wouldn't be uncommon if there's a, if there's, I agree with you. Something, somewhere someone thinks is kicking in a sidewalk. That's my first question. Why do we say that and why do we want that? If that, if however, it should be there, then we would add a condition of this conditional use that it'd be on this, on these four lots as well, right? But, but I don't have the answer to the question here tonight.
Right. The difficult with that is I'd rather say if it's in code, then we will do it, absolutely.
I'd actually rather you come back next week and a, and a week probably won't kill you, I would, I would argue, right? Rather than, and not, and just, and tidy it up. And I know you don't want to do that, but I, it's an option at this point.
I don't not want to do that. We want to do a project that meets code that everybody wants and we'll get a permit for it the first time. We don't want to submit something that's different. So if that was the case, that's fine. Obviously, we didn't get comments to those three things until just the other day.
I totally get it. So I, we either need to deal with it or not. So I'm going to go, so I got Spring, Strike, Spinelli, and then we'll go to staff and figure out what the heck we're doing.
Okay, this is directed to staff. I guess it bothers me that when you say that, it doesn't have to be on the site plan because it's required as part of the permit. Well, where do you draw the line? All this stuff is, the parking number, parking spaces are required by code and yet we insist that they show the correct number of parking spaces. The landscaping, the perimeter landscaping is required by code. If, if you follow that logic, you don't even have to do a site plan. You don't have to show anything on there. You show a blank piece of paper and you get it passed. So there's, where's the line there? I don't get it. You either show everything on the site plan, whether it's required or not, or you, you know, you don't, you're, it's not complete.
Mr. Strike.
And if I can interpret here, and this is to the petitioner, if, if you listen to what some of the other commissioners are saying, they're trying to develop a roadmap so you don't have to be back here multiple times.
Would the sidewalk, the sidewalk would be in the right-of-way, correct?
The sidewalk would be in the right-of-way, correct. Not on property which has nothing to do with this.
What you're showing is only on your property.
And typically roadway improvements are subject to 10% of the value of the project. So you work that out, it's negotiated. The problem ends up being is if we start putting things here, then they become law and we have to adhere to those.
I'm getting more comfortable with it since it's outside the, the parcel, but Greg, you, you were good? Mr. Spinelli.
I think that, I'm ready to support a motion to hear this. I think they've got a three-step process. This is a conditional use just to turn R3 into parking, which it's already been. The next step, they're going to get a, go to the plating board to get a plat approved and a building permit, which I hear is already submitted. There's so many bites at the apple at this thing. And to, for me to support a conditional use, to use an R3 parking lot as a parking that's been parking for as long as I can remember, I say I'm ready to approve it tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Spinelli. Staff, any final questions related to this traffic comment? You're not, you're not wishing to add any conditions related to the traffic comment, albeit late and everything else? Thank you. What's the, what's the, thanks, Ron. The public hearing is closed. What's the wish of the body? Mr. Strike.
I'll do it. In the matter of case 2018-0040, the conditional use for off-street parking in the R3 mixed residential district, I move for approval with the staff's three recommendations as identified. So moved.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Looney. Speak to your motion. Go ahead.
Speaking of that motion, there was no public testimony for or against in, in, on this matter. The, apparently we will see, the petitioner will continue to pursue the development of this lot through its replating, through its zoning and through the building construction. So many of the concerns that were raised will be addressed during the permitting and process, so.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. Ms. Bailey.
I also just want to note that it meets the findings of AMC 21-03, or the conditions of AMC 21-03-08-0D, all nine standards. And that while there was not a resolution of support by the Spinelli Community Council, it appears that there was a non-objection to this, which is essentially a support, another way to write it. So I would be in favor of this as well.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. I'll also support the motion. It's a, a parking lot isn't allowed, isn't allowed use by conditional use in the R3 zoning district. It's not uncommon to have parking lots in, in business districts as well as multifamily zoning districts. This approval, along with the others that are coming, allows for some additional business development, frankly, in a part of town that could use a, a little bit of positive development. And with that, I, like I said, I'll support the, the motion. Could we please vote? That is approved. So I saved you a trip back next week. All right. So we heard about a case that was across from the REI Mall that will no longer be the REI Mall and now we're dealing with a case that is maybe going to be the REI Mall and was the Sears Mall, but maybe isn't the Sears Mall. But anyhow, I'm confused. Let's talk about case 2018-41, Saratage Finance LLC, a major site plan review for redevelopment of tenant space in a large commercial establishment, the mall at Sears, generally located south of East Northern Lights Boulevard, west of Seward Highway and north of East Benson Boulevard. We have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for a major site plan review of a large commercial establishment for the remodel of the former Sears store at the east end of the Sears Mall. The remodel will create space for a new Cars Grocery Store, a Guitar Center and three additional retail tenants that have not been identified yet. The proposed improvements include interior and exterior upgrades to the structure, a reconfiguration of the east parking area adjacent to the Seward Highway, the addition of perimeter and interior parking lot landscaping and the removal of the one-way drive aisle adjacent to Benson Boulevard. The original development of this site was in 1966, prior to current Title 21 requirements for building design, parking and landscaping. Because of the legal non-conforming status of this site, it is considered to have an improved major site plan. Sites with non-conforming characteristics of use are required to move in the direction of conformity with Title 21 when project costs exceed 10% of the replacement cost of the building. The details about the changes that move this site in the direction of conformity are on page 35 of your staff packet. Existing landscaping on this site is very limited. The addition of interior and parking lot perimeter landscaping brings this site much closer to conformity with current Title 21 standards. Current Title 21 requires an area of at least 10% of the parking lot to be interior parking lot landscaping when there are more than 200 spaces on the lot. The current site, this is the east end of the site, has two interior landscaping islands at the east entrance from the Seward Highway. The proposed site plan shows area equal to 7.6% of the east parking area will be devoted to interior parking lot landscaping. The removal of the one-way drive aisle on the south side of the building adjacent to Benson Boulevard adds additional site perimeter landscaping and increases safety. The proposed roofline and facade modulations on the east-facing side of the structure are a change in the direction of conformity with the building design standards of Chapter 7 in Title 21. New sidewalk overhangs contribute to weather protection for pedestrians. New windows, clearly defined entrances, varied building materials, colors and other facade details increase visual variety and contribute to the changes in the direction of conformity as well. The parking calculations on the site have changed slightly from the previous major site plan review for this mall. The site plan proposed for this project reduces the overall number of parking spaces provided by four spaces. This reduction is due to a change in the layout of the accessible spaces in the east parking area. The calculation for the required parking for the site has also changed. The parking requirement has been reduced by 17 spaces because a portion of the former retail space will be changed to storage area, which has a lower parking calculation. The overall site now provides 1,014 parking spaces and 998 are required. The proposed site plan shows snow storage in required parking areas. Long-term snow storage in required parking spaces is not allowed. An alternative snow management agreement is requested as one of the suggested conditions of approval for this site. This remodel is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan and is an upgrade to one of our city's major employment centers. In conclusion, the department finds that the standards of approval are substantially met. The proposed site improvements are a change in the direction of conformity consistent with the requirements of AMC 2112-060 and therefore recommends approval of the major site plan review, subject to the conditions of approval on page 16 of the staff packet. Condition number two requires the applicant to provide information about a change in paving material for the required accessible walkway, an alternative snow management plan and a final landscape plan with a stamp and signature of a registered State of Alaska landscape architect to the planning department. Condition number three requires a petitioner to resolve the need for improved pedestrian access to the east entry door from the sidewalk along Northern Lights Boulevard per the State of Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities comments. I will be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Mr. Spring.
Just out of curiosity, when you calculate the amount of, towards the improvements, the 20%, and they obviously meet it, but doesn't the exterior facade improvements count towards that? I mean, it is moving towards conformity. Wouldn't you include that in the total?
Yes, it would be included if it were necessary. The calculations that they, they provided to us with the landscaping equals more than the required 20%, so they did not include calculations or a dollar amount for the exterior facade improvements.
I think that would have been useful, though, regardless of whether, you know, they, they exceeded it, just to let us know that, yeah, they went way above what was required and that would be useful information, I think, in the future.
Just a question on the, on the, the case we heard last meeting in the same mall. Were the interior improvements part of the calculation?
In the last mall, in the, in the last major site plan review, yes, they were because those interior improvements exceeded 50% of the replacement cost of the building.
So when you calculate the, the amount of interior improvements, are you, are you calculating, I mean, there's a, there's a number of tenant spaces that are, which is vacant, they're not identified. So are they, how do you calculate future tenant improvement space? Is it excluded from basis then? I mean, in other words, could you get this through by just building a spec mall without interior improvements and then later you come back with your TI? Whereas the other applicant had clear tenant in mind, so they showed you what those were.
It's, if, if this were a new, a brand-new facility and they were coming in with a, you know, a vacant building, they would be required to meet all of the Title 21 requirements, so it wouldn't be an issue. This provision only applies to existing structures that, you know, have non-conforming rights. So when you, we talk about a vacant tenant space, I guess, you know, we would have to put a valuation on it? That valuation typically comes from the, the construction cost in the building permit?
Yeah, it's just, I mean, I don't know how much different they are in size, but it just one, I, I really don't like the whole process that we go down this path. Just to be clear, I'm just trying to understand what's fair. And so we had a, you know, just last meeting, one where clearly their renovation budget kicked them over the 50%. This is an awfully big space also. I mean, really excluding just the Nordstrom Rack, it's an awfully big space, probably what? Bigger than the other space? And yet it's deemed to not get anywhere near that threshold. So I just, I'm just trying to reconcile it. Dave, you got an idea?
Mr. Robinson, I, you know, I think that there's, there's a number of ways around code. In this particular instance, one might phase a project or piecemeal a project to get away from the requirements of, of the, of including the interior improvements. I'm not suggesting that, that this applicant did that, but we're simply taking the numbers that they gave us and applying them to code. Yeah, certainly that there, there are ways around the- applying them to code. Yeah, certainly that there are ways around the code and piecemealing or phasing a project to not include, or to push the improvements, let's say, to the building permit phase as opposed to under the site plan. It would be looked at under the building permit and potentially applied there if they met the threshold. I don't suspect in this case that would, that would be, that would happen, but there are certainly ways around the code. I mean, there always is.
I'm just looking for consistent application of the code more than anything else.
And that's understood, and we try to consistently apply the code as best we can.
Okay. Mr. Spring? And then, Ms. Calhoun, if you, the condition number three, resolve with State of Alaska the need for improved pedestrian access to the east entry doors from the sidewalk along Northern Lights Boulevard. What are we, what are we trying to get at there?
So the State of Alaska comments that are included in your packet was a pretty strongly worded comment, dealing with pedestrian access to the, you know, neighboring sidewalks. And
By the way, I love that the DOT is worried about pedestrian access off of Northern Lights Boulevard and Benson through Midtown. I just love that one, but go ahead.
The one specific comment that they made was the pedestrian access from the east entry doors to Northern Lights. And so we've just asked that the petitioner contact DOT similar to, you know, the previous applicant for this site, and work with them to resolve that specific comment.
Is that going to affect their site plan at all?
It shouldn't.
Okay. And this, I got to ask, because they really, they were cranky twice in a row, but they keep talking about this lack of non-motorized connections in the overall part of Midtown. So have, has the municipality looked at overall as this mall redeveloped per DOT's recommendation to say, are there things that you could do here on a super block, right, in the middle of Midtown? Clearly, it, you know, divides up, you know, north-south connections. Have we looked at any, I mean, have we looked at anything, or we just, we're okay with just letting that comment go, and there's nothing that could be done here to enhance that overall network? I might even ask Mr. Spring if he's got any thoughts about what, you know, what they, what they're even really mining for there, really.
Well, it is, staff, it is part of the code, but this is, doesn't have to meet all the requirements. So they're moving towards conformity. The question is, is this really more important than other areas of moving towards conformity? And I'd say probably not. It's the landscaping, the parking lot's more important, the facade's more important. This case, it's just a very narrow frontage compared to the length of the frontage. If it was, like, wider, and there was, it would be probably beneficial to have another access in the middle of the parking lot. In this case, anybody coming to this from, on the Seward Highway is going to probably use the existing sidewalks. So it's going to be kind of redundant to have another sidewalk to the middle of the parking lot here. I don't see the point, when there's other things that need to be addressed first.
Okay. I'm good with that, if you're good with that. Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Looney? Oh, Mr. Gardner, then Mr. Looney, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, while we're on the topic of the DOT comments, you know, they have their objection that they say that the site, the master site plan is required to be submitted as mandatory standards under 2107128.5.n. And I think there's a, one of the comments here, it looks like planning has concluded that the master site plan is not in fact required. And am I understanding that correctly? Basically, that's on the notion that even though, I guess, the site is considered to have more than one building, it's treated as one building for purposes of that provision? Is that right?
That's correct. A master site plan is required when there is more than one building on a site. Technically, from a construction standpoint, this is two buildings, but it functions as one structure. And so therefore, we don't feel that a master site plan is required.
Yeah, and that makes sense to me. I was just wondering if this is, I don't know how often this comes up, I haven't been around that long, but is this, is this like a, an interpretation that's had an opportunity? Is this the first time that this has come up as far as interpreting that provision, or is this something that we've seen before?
As far as the state's interpretation or our interpretation?
Or the planning department's interpretation.
It's a pretty clear interpretation from the planning department. It functions as one structure. It's connected all the way through in the interior. We would require a master site plan if it were two structures with separation, separate entrances, then a master site plan would be required. But since it is so clearly functioning as one structure, we don't feel that a master site plan is required.
Yeah. No, I mean, I, I'm not, I guess that makes sense to me. I'm just trying to get a sense of if this is like an ongoing dispute with DOT, or if this is, if this is like a, an existing disagreement about the interpretation?
Mr. Gardner, I think that this is a kind of a one-off situation. I don't know that DOT quite understands Title 21 and its application. So no, this is not an ongoing dispute.
I gather there was, there was some disagreements as to viewing the code, but that, thank you.
Mr. Looney?
Yeah, I guess I was just going to comment on DOT's comment, I guess, but so their attempt to maybe strengthen the pedestrian connection, like from Northern Lights, right on the north edge of the building there, there's, there's, of course, a driveway. And I definitely see, it's not real clear in the drawing whether that's going to be a landscaped median there, but it would sure be great to have like a sidewalk connection that's where you're not in the parking lot or in the driveway, that's going east-west. No, I guess I'd be north-south there on the east edge of that driveway. I realize they can go on either side. And maybe this is interpreted to be pedestrians crossing on the west side of that driveway. But like, there's so much pedestrian traffic in this area that I think they, with all these other improvements they're doing with the parking lot, if they can accommodate pedestrians in Midtown, it's never a bad thing. I realize we're not, we don't have to get all the details worked out now, but let's try to get partway there.
Mr. Spring?
Just to follow up, I guess, I mean, I could see it if there was a bus stop there. I mean, that's, I think, one of the reasons why we have that in Title 21. Is there a bus stop on Seward Highway in that location?
No, I don't believe so.
Yeah, I don't think there's a, there's a bus route on Seward Highway. Okay.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to invite the petitioner forward. Let me know how much time you'd like reserved for rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Tim Potter, P-O-T-T-E-R, with Dow, representing Saratage tonight. I'd like to reserve two minutes of rebuttal time out of the 10. And then I'd like to not use my time to answer all the questions that have been asked already, because there are answers. We're here tonight to review the remainder of the former Sears store from a large retail establishment standpoint. It's important for you to note that, as the state had indicated, a master site plan, that really is more associated with a Tocotnew Commons Cabela's-type Target Mall area where there's multiple buildings. And that relationship between the buildings is so important to get those linkages. I wanted first to start out with the landscaping site plan. It shows the interior and the exterior of the parking lot, and where that landscaping will be done. It's about 7.6% or 7.7% of the surface area of the parking lot is now going to be interior. We've attempted to distribute the landscaping areas to meet the requirements of not more than 20 spaces in a continuous line to break up the interior of the parking lot. With the, this plan, there's also a significant landscape area that is adjacent to the south side of the building, where there's been the large parcel pickup lane adjacent to Benson going opposite direction of the flow of traffic on Benson. We're going to take that and turn it into a complete landscape bed area, and there'll be vegetation as well as architectural trellises built to help break up the look of that very long, solid wall. When we move into the interior of the actual structure itself in the colored drawing, you can see that even though there was some, I think, discussion about whether or not the commitments were there to extend the mall all the way to the east face of the building, it is there as part of this application, and it is the intent to complete that out to the east side. You can see that the multiple stores that are going to be there are, a couple are, like Safeway is access to the exterior as well as the interior of the mall. The Guitar Center has access to the outside of the mall as well, or outside of the building as well as onto the mall. And this is to make sure that if there's different times that they're in operation or have events, that they don't depend on opening up the entire mall from a security standpoint, that they can operate and do their activities separately. So you'll see that that does go the entire length. And on the adjacent drawing, you can see a widened-out area that's about 30.5 feet in width. That will be a, the community area as part of this development. So it's over the 2,000 square foot area. There will be seating provided so that people can take a rest in the middle of the, of the walkway and that. So there'll be a full continuation all the way to the REI store, since we're all talking about REI. I hope that that helps. The tenant space E has an entry area on the ground floor, which again, will have an access to the mall as well as outside, and then a majority of the space is upstairs. Sears actually had a fairly large space, about 28,000 square feet upstairs, that they used for some office, some storage. That will be put into play with a tenant. The downstairs will have a combination of a stairway, an elevator, and an escalator is being evaluated at this time. So most of that will just be a landing lobby area to go upstairs. And that corner of the space will, as you can see in the elevation drawings, will have windows at the second level as well. So that'll be full height ground level to second level, open air, so that you'd be connecting, and there'd be a positive connection from downstairs to the upstairs. Quickly, the site plan, the landscaping, the parking. Ms. Calhoun, get a good review of our requirement to reconcile the parking differences between our original application for this, the Gottstein Properties application that was approved last time. And between the two, there were designs done that weren't necessarily passed on until later between the two parties, as well as going through. So we went through, incorporated their drawings that were approved, our drawings, and added the Nordstrom Rack modifications, counted up the spaces, figured out what the parking requirements were, and reconciled that into a table, and then the letters that went to staff to do that. So there is adequate parking, but it is pretty tight from a code standpoint. Let's see. Let's see. This page, architectural. This is where the facelift part of the remodel comes into play. There's a pretty significant effort put forward to change the east face of the building and the frontage toward the new Seward Highway, as well as what you'll see from Northern Lights and Benson. In that, there is roof modulation, so the elevations of the buildings change, the rooflines change. Each of the storefronts is emphasized, so you can find that. There's coverings that, for covered awning walkway for northern environment, 63%, which is greater than the 60% minimum requirement for overhangs or awnings is there. The color and the materials, there'll be a significant amount of ephes that is both colorized and textured differently to create a lot of both shadow effects, colors, texture differences. And then there'll be some metal paneling of a variety of different things, including a bronze metal, and then some aluminum shades of adequate effect, and then signage and lighting within the frontage of each entry. So we think it breaks up the look of the mall that we've all come to love for so long, and it takes advantage of the second-floor portion of the building and actually makes that look like it really is part of the building. Most people didn't even know that there was an upstairs. With that, I'd like to go then directly to the conditions of approval and indicate that in general, we are in agreement. There was a good question. 2A is not a problem, and we look forward to working with the staff to show that on the site plan. We believe that DOT was actually looking for, and what the staff commented on, was to make sure that from the slightly widened walkway along the east face of the building, which will be expanding from about nine feet wide to 12 feet wide, so it's an important increase of width there to make that walk a little bit more comfortable and give more human scale to it. That the connection from where the Nordstrom Rack corner is across that east-west driveway, and then the short walkway to the Northern Lights walkway that is DOT's, that making sure that across that driveway that there's an adequate demarcation, and we have full intent to do that. We would object and ask that you release us from number three. The word "resolve with DOT" can sometimes be an oxymoron. I don't want to, you know, make too big a deal out of it, but this appears to be covered in the above staff recommendation and condition in 2A. And to now expose us to going and resolve something with an entity that is really outside of their jurisdiction on this site makes me very uncomfortable from a timing standpoint. It's not an issue of doing the work. It's really an issue of getting the ability to get it resolved and not leveraged and jammed. And we can't press DOT to come and act by a certain date. They can act when they want, how they want, and require whatever they want. And to expose us to that, I think, is unfair, inappropriate, and we'll be happy to work it out with staff, which I think is more appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Just over a minute left. Mr. Strike?
Thank you. And I guess this is a question back to the staff, how that number three made its way in, and whether or not that was a discussion point when we did the Nordstrom Rack, because it's the same pedestrian side coming in from the east side.
The comment was made because of the State of Alaska comments for this project. So the condition, sorry, was put in there because of their comments.
I don't recall seeing that comment when we discussed for eight months the Nordstrom Rack issue.
It was not a comment during, I'm sorry, I didn't do Nordstrom Rack, so, but it wasn't a comment during the Nordstrom Rack. It was, it was during the Gottstein Property Site Plan Review.
Okay. And do you concur with the petitioner that this is something outside of their direct control as it pertains to this request before us tonight?
I do. Any improvements on the actual site are outside of the State of Alaska DOT authority, jurisdiction.
Okay. And a question to the petitioner. And as I'm going through L102, which is the site plan diagram for the area south on Benson, is that, I know there's a right away, there's currently a road, and that's being abandoned and all being filled in with...
All being landscaped, and those plans are in the packet, and that's southern piece adjacent to the building, I believe, is on page...
That's a lot of landscaping.
It's a lot of landscaping, yeah. And it is shown on page 72 from an elevation standpoint.
Was there any other alternative uses for that area that you had looked at, or is this a default position? Is this a, it's prime space. I know that you've got a facade, you've got a visual that you're, you know, concerned about, but it just seems a large abandonment of a large area that, was this your first choice?
The first choice based on both my sense of the site and our ability to actually have a dramatic impact on probably the ugliest wall of the entire development to the greatest number of people and the visibility on Benson, which I drive home on every night. number of people, and the visibility on Benson, which I drive home on every night. So I get to see that wall at least once today. It's been, it's been a frustration for a long time that there's no windows, there's no texture beyond the CMU, there's nothing. And there's a sidewalk and a, about a 10-foot wide lane, and that's where you go and pick up a, a large box, if that's what you're going to get from, that's smaller than what you'd have to go over to the distribution center warehouse to get. And it just seemed like a wasted space, and it's certainly not the, the best-looking. And a southern exposed wall in this town getting full sun, when it's going to be the, basically, the back of house of a, of a grocery store, likely no chance of getting windows in it. So putting plant material there that will grow really well, show really nice, create a lot of different color and texture year-round, we thought that that was the best action.
And I, and I mention this only because one of the, one of the things that grocery stores are doing nationwide is creating areas where there's drive-up, pickup, where they, you order your groceries and they come out, and so before, before tonight, before I opened the package, I'm thinking, okay, cars over there, that's, that seemed like the right area. So I was trying to second-guess what might be done, and then when I saw this, it was a bit of a surprise, but I'm good.
I guess e-commerce is a, a common thing, and you can go to different stores in town and pull up now and park and let them know you're there, and they'll run it out. And I expect a similar thing will occur out of either the back or out of the front.
Thank you.
Mr. Potter, what, what, did you say on that condition three that you were okay to resolving it, but resolving it with the MOA, not with DOT?
I, I think that it's effectively exactly the same requested condition of approval as 2A.
Okay. You have no problem resolving that issue with staff?
I have no problem resolving that with, with the municipality where I think it's most appropriate. What we can't, just like with, with Gottstein Properties, when there was a discussion about a delay and, and could they wait, it would be impactful to be delayed at this time, because we are moving forward with construction activities and would like to get that permitted and going, rather than having the store sit there dead for another month or two. So we would like to move forward, and, and as a consultant, I just can't feel good about letting this one go by, because I don't know exactly...
I heard you, I heard you.
How what DOT will do, and I know you've done driveway permits as well and other things, and it might happen in a month, and it might happen in six months.
But it's the DOT part, it's the, more than it is the condition, I just, I...
It is the DOT part.
Yep. Got it. Okay, thank you. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. And so anyone wishing to testify on this case, please come on down.
Oh, this is free.
All right, going once, going twice. Mr. Potter, you have a minute, seven seconds.
And maybe hopefully some questions. I think this really responds to an upgrade of the facility within the context of being able to actually provide enough parking for the square footage that's there, and that's an assured thing within the code. I, I wanted to respond a little bit to some of the circulation issues that a couple of folks brought up, and what DOT's issue was. It is a super block running from east to west, all the way to Denali. The problem is, is that when you start looking at where they, they are having most of the pedestrian vehicle problems, and unfortunate interfacing, including some deaths, is on Benson, south side of the road, bus stop, and there seems to be a significant draw for people to run basically mid-block, in the rain, in the dark, wearing dark clothes, and getting hit by cars. The effort has been to try and push the pedestrian connections closer to the new Seward Highway and closer to Denali Street, because that's likely where, and Denali Street will be a pedestrian feeder all the way to, to Fireweed, as well going south, then getting on to 32nd, 33rd connection by Moose's Tooth, which is being worked on right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Potter. Any final questions for petitioner? Okay, thank you, Mr. Potter. As, as, as we do, if, if we start to add additional conditions, we'll, we'll bring you up and ask for your thoughts on, on any of those conditions.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
What's the will of the body? Mr. Gardner.
I actually had a question for staff before we proceed.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I was just wondering, I'm looking at some of these requirements here, and on page nine, for example, I think it may be just limited to these two, is the bicycle parking spaces and the, the parking spaces for vehicles that are kind of reliant, in effect, on what's happening on the other side of the building. And I guess my question is, when, when we're looking at these, these factors, how, if there's, if it makes sense, or if there's any way, I mean, I, I don't expect there to be any problem with that stuff going through on the other side, but there's no, as I understand it, kind of formal linkage between this application and what we reviewed last, I guess it was just last time. And, because I don't know what my question is precisely, but that's, that's kind of a concern I have, as, as to, as to approving this on the basis of something that's unrelated to this application.
You're correct that there's no formal linkage between the two site plan reviews. However, since each end of this mall has legal non-conforming rights, even if the other end of the mall, for some reason, didn't go through and didn't do anything, this end of the mall is still moving in the direction of conformity and would still be approved independent of the other end.
Mr. Spring.
But there is, to staff, to the chair, there are bicycle racks or accommodations on this side, I think, in the site plan, correct?
Yeah, they said, there's some, yep.
There's like three or four or something? Yeah, seven, so.
And there, I think there's some already on the south side of the mall as well, although they don't look like bike racks, so people don't, they're beautiful, but they don't look like bike racks, so people don't lock their bikes to them. All right. Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion? Ms. Bailey.
In the matter of case 20... In the matter of case 2018-0041, I move to approve the major site plan review subject to the conditions on page 16, and I'm going to offer an amendment afterwards.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second of all, Mr. Strike, go ahead.
And then I will move to amend. Condition number three, to state, resolve with staff the need for an improved pedestrian access to the east entry doors from the sidewalk along Northern Lights Boulevard.
Ms. Bailey, can you say, "Resolve with the planning department" as opposed to "staff"?
Yes.
Second of all, Mr. Gardner, any discussion on that point? Ms. Bailey, you want to speak to it?
Specifically for that motion, it does sound like staff has validated the petitioner's concern that this is really outside of DOT's purview, and so if we're going to be discussing it with someone who is intimate with these issues, it should be our planning department.
Very good, I'll support it. I, I recognize Mr. Potter said he'd rather not have it at all, and that it was covered somewhere else, but I also didn't, didn't hear them indicate that it was any big issue and it was something that you wanted to deal with. So I'm, I'm going to support the, the amendment to the motion. Please vote on that. The main motion is amended. Would you like to speak to the main motion? Or anyone wishing to speak to the main motion? Mr. Strike.
I, I think we have to compliment the developer, the petitioner, in coming forward in this economic time and making the improvements that they see, that I think the community will benefit from the improvements that are made. I, for one, appreciate the commitment to being, staying in the community and making it viable and creating a vital and viable work-play space here, so, thank you.
Anyone wish to speak to findings specific to the, the criteria? Mr. Spring.
Yes, I'd like to find that it meets the goals and intent of the comprehensive plan, which is, this is an area in the midtown area, which has real potential for growth and improvement. Also meets the AMC 2103-180F for administrative or major site plan review, meets all those requirements contained in that section. Also like to state that it goes over and above the requirements to, towards conformity for a major retail site plan review, and they should be commended for that.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Mr. Strike.
Yes, I would also note as a finding that there was no public testimony for or against, identified here this evening, and specifically, the adjoining property owner, developer wasn't, did not testify or raise any negative considerations on the property improvements here.
And I'm, I'm going to support the, the motion. Clearly, as a structure built in the 60s, as a big giant box, the property has some challenges to meet our current code in totality, but what it does is it moves it towards conformity and, and likely exceeds the minimum amount that would have been required to move it in that direction. I think also, I'd, I'd just add that we've heard a number of cases, and, and I think this site now, with both the improvements, and I mean the overall site, with improvements that have both come before us, as well as those improvements that have been made not before us, really start to make this place feel like one place that has visual interest on multiple sides, in arguably the most visible location in, in midtown. I think it's, it's commendable, there are, there's a lot more landscaping to take care of now, so as we drive by it now, that's what we'll look for. No longer Conexes in the, in the parking lots, but, but actually that you have some landscaping to maintain. So with that, I'll be supporting the, the motion. Anyone else? Thank you for coming here this evening and for making the trip to Alaska again, and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, thanks everyone for your patience tonight. Could I get a motion to adjourn? Mr. Strike, is there a second?
Second.
Second of all, Ms. Bailey, this meeting's adjourned.